Good morning and welcome to today's March ninth, two thousand twenty-one San Benito County Board of Supervisors meeting. Peter, can you put yourself on mute, por favor?
I am off mute, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, appreciate it. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by our Supervisor Bob Tiffany.
Ready salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Assistant Clerk, a notice of temporary procedures for Board of Supervisor meetings, please.
Good morning, Board. Good morning, community members. Members of the public who wish to speak during public comment periods, please press star nine or raise your hand icon on your screen. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Can I get an acknowledgement, a knowledge certificate of posting?
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 It's five zero. Presentations and recognitions. I see there is, there is none. Public comment. This is the opportunity to address the Board on items of interest not appearing on the agenda. No action may be taken unless provided by government code section five four nine five four dash two. Any public comment?
If anyone wants to make a public comment, please press star nine or they'll raise your hand icon on your screen. There is no public comments.
I see there's no public comment. Bring it back to the Board for Department Head announcements. This is information only. No action can be taken.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everyone. I did want, we do have some announcements today. I just wanted to inform the Board that we did receive the new TriCaster system for our Board meetings. We received it three, three twenty-one, and tomorrow there'll be a company installing the technology for our Board meetings. Just wanted to give the Board a heads up on that. It should take about a week to install, so we should have it ready for our next Board meeting. Just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of it. We also have some new staff, and I wanted to go ahead and introduce our Budget Analyst. I'd like to ask him to step up to the podium. Gabriel Rosco. And he, he can go to the other one, Gabriel. He comes from Behavioral Health. He's managed their fiscal responsibilities there, budgets, state reports, billing, so on and so forth. He comes, he went to school at Cal Poly and made, minored in statistics and economics as well as concentration as, as business administration and concentration and finance. So we're, we're happy to have him. And great for succession planning coming up, the ranks, and we're really excited to have him on board. So I just wanted to introduce him to your Board. He'll be working with us through the budget process. He's already hit the ground running, and there's a lot of work that needs to be done, so welcome aboard. Gabriel, go ahead and say a few words.
Well, good morning, and I'm happy to be here. Like Ray mentioned, I'm very excited about the opportunity to continue to provide services for our community. Now in a bigger setting, like Ray mentioned before, I was working with Behavioral Health, and I was there for three years and worked with them through the budget process and all fiscal matters. And now I'm kind of moving up to a bigger stage here with the, with the Administration Office. And then here, I'm very excited to kind of, like Ray mentioned, hit the, hit the ground running and be able to kind of bring us up to speed and make sure that we can continue to grow our community and our county. So I'm very excited to kind of get going and looking forward to working and collaborating with the Board and with the departments out there.
Welcome.
Great.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you for stepping up.
So we also have another announcements out of our Clerk of the Board's office. I'd like to invite Jennifer.
Good morning, Chair and Board of Supervisors. We have two announcements from the Clerk of the Board's office. One, we will be removing item number eleven from the agenda for Health and Human Services for the reappointment for CAB. There was a technical glitch over the weekend. This item was not accessible online from the public to view. I did go ahead and make that edit, but we are going to move it to the March twenty-third meeting for your consideration. Secondly, I would like to introduce our new Assistant Clerk of the Board. Yesterday was her first official start date. She has been working in the Admin Office for the couple of last months for, as our Office Assistant. I'm very happy to have her on board, so I'd like to welcome her, Vanessa Delgado.
Good morning, members of the Board. My name's Vanessa Delgado. I attended UC Santa Cruz, and I graduated with a Bachelor's in Legal Studies. Have about eleven years' experience as a paralegal, and I'm very grateful and thankful to have opportunity to work with members of the community as well as our Board here and everyone on the staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah, I'm welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Assistant Clerk and Clerk. I wanted to give a brief update. We are planning to have a San Houston update soon. Our plan, we're planning for the March twenty-third meeting, depending on, on how the responses that we get. It'll either be the March twenty-third or April thirteenth. Just wanted to make sure the Board was aware that we're working on that.
That's, is that the reservoir?
That's San Houston reservoir.
Okay.
And Chris Mangano, she, I think, is she on the phone? I think she wanted to do a hazardous mitigation update.
Good morning, Board. Wanted to update you on the hazardous mitigation plan that we are working on with a consultant at this time. And just to give you a little background, the hazardous mitigation plan is a countywide plan that identifies risks and vulnerabilities to certain hazards such as wildfires and pandemics. It will identify projects to minimize the potential impacts of those hazards, and we will use that information to increase the community's resiliency. It is a requirement through the state and the feds to have this plan. We went out to bid about a year ago, and we are working with Hegarty Consulting on it. With them, in partnership with them, we'll be sending out a community hazard survey, and it's an opportunity for the community to contribute to the planning process and to understand what the community is looking for. So be on the lookout for the survey. We'll be using our PIO to distribute that and get it out in mail, in the mail as well. If you would like to see a copy of it, I can have that emailed to you. We have a draft of it currently and hope to see that out in the next couple of weeks. That's the update from the Office of Emergency Services.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. That's all the announcements we have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. We will go on to Board announcements. Once again, informational only. No action can or will be taken. We'll start off with Supervisor Peter Hernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'll make mine brief. We had one meeting last week with our PD, Public Defender Committee, and, and without giving too many details, it's moving along, and ultimately, there, there's been amazing engagement from that committee. They've done a really good job of, of really going through the, the details and fleshing out what, what the interests were of the committee and, of the community, I'm sorry, and making sure that we're doing our due diligence to, to strengthen that position, so. And I want to thank Supervisor Gonzalez for, for being a leader in that. I think it was, I think ultimately, it was honestly a unified effort, and we, it was amazing. Five different, you know, five different committee members, two different ad hoc, you know, two different individuals on the ad hoc. All of us still came together with different mindsets coming in, ultimately with a focus of benefiting our community. It was, it was a really good outcome, and thank you for County Council for facilitating this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We'll go to Supervisor Cosmickey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I got a, just a brief thing, a resident concerned about RVs being used as residential property, so I don't know if that's something we could potentially look into. On the...
Well, Barbara.
If they could file a complaint, there's a specific form with Code Enforcement. We can give you the link to forward to them, and then they need to file a written complaint with Code Enforcement. That'd be great. I'll, I'll see whether we can send that link to you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Can you send it to all five supervisors, because I've had some complaints, too. Thank you.
And then on the economic ad hoc, I'm sure Supervisor Tiffany may address this as well. We had a really productive brainstorming session where we talked about potential revenue generation, and I know our staff basically talked about bringing back some of those ideas as we go along here, maybe the ones that are more realistic at the beginning or more, you know, short-term that we could address. And then the regional park ad hoc, we're still working on, and I know that'll be on today's agenda. We had that meeting, and so we'll have a report on that later. The three CE, Community Choice Energy Board, I'm one of the directors appointed by Chairman Medina on that board. The last meeting, I think the main issue was, that I would say was the CEO's compensation, and he currently earns three hundred thirty thousand dollars a year along with a thirty thousand dollar bonus, and the proposal was to increase his pay by, to extend his contract by year, increase his pay by fifty thousand dollars. Of the, all the directors, I was the only one to question this, and I was the only one to officially oppose it. The Monterey Bay Air Resources District, I'm on. If anyone's interested in being on the Advisory Committee there, please let me know. Contact me. You can find my cell phones, email. So I'm looking to try to fill that appointment. The Seniors Council, the Master Plan for Aging Forum, the date changed from March seventeenth. It's now March nineteenth, from ten to noon. More details to come on that. Our Library Ad hoc Committee had, I thought, another productive meeting, and hopefully we'll have some more information. You know, we're just trying to work through our options, trying to be creative and try not to, potentially not spend too much money and keep that as, you know, productive as possible. The, we're going to talk vaccine and COVID later. We had obviously some vaccine meetings. The, I joined our other fellow new supervisors with the California State Association of Counties, required training on Thursday and Friday, and so that was half the day each day. I thought one of the more interesting things is that broadband is, is really a big priority for CSAC, and I was glad to hear that. And then the, let's see here, real quick, San Juan Batista's holding a master plan meeting for its Luck Park changes, potential development changes there at six PM tonight. And I just want to reiterate, our county is holding our EIR scoping meeting for the John Smith Road landfill expansion. I believe if I have that right, that's Wednesday at two PM. And then lastly, somebody brought up with the Deansa Trail, previously the late Jim West would do help with the grading on that, and there's a car club event coming up, and I was asked to look into whether the county could maybe potentially work with Granite Rock again on, or if we could do something with the grading on Deansa Trail in light of that event coming up in June. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Bob Tiffany.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's, it's been busy several, the last couple of weeks for all of us. First of all, we, you know, and, and in many cases, been working with Supervisor Cosmickey on a number of these areas. We're going to hear about it more here later today in the agenda, but we've been working closely on, on the business grants and determining the recipients that will be announced later this week. I think that's, you know, very important and, and exciting that we're getting through that process, and we'll be helping some of our local businesses with county grants. A big area for our entire county and certainly for, for my district has to do with county roads, and I, and probably short of dealing with COVID issues, that, that's the, the number one issue that I hear from in terms of, you know, my constituents, and I'm, I'm sure that's true for many of us up here. Just going to mention a, a couple of things. There's roughly four hundred and sixty miles of county roads that we're responsible for, and about, of those four hundred and sixty, nearly half, all, just over two hundred miles are in District Four, most of which are in South County. I spent last, last Tuesday, all day with Jason DeRosa, who's the, oversees the Public Works Department, and we visited all the South County roads down into Pinocchio Valley. I've lived here all my life, and we were on roads that I've never, I didn't even know existed down there. It's no great news, but the roads down there are in, are in terrible shape, and we're going to be trying to address those as, as soon as possible. Combination of potentially federal emergency money, federal grants that we've spoken about, and we're going to be trying to pursue. As well as, I believe at our next meeting, we will be taking up a proposal to look at bringing in a third-party contractor to do some immediate work. But anyway, county roads are a huge priority for us. We've, we've spoken about this before, and I've seen it, seen it firsthand. The day after tomorrow, actually, Jason and I are spending another day going on the other side down toward the Pinnacle Side, Old Hernandez, Bitterwater. You know, through, through all of those areas and Colingo Road. I've never been to Colingo, so I'm looking, looking forward to that. But anyway, so I just wanted to mention that Supervisor Cosmickey already mentioned this, but a very important issue that's coming up before our community is the landfill expansion. The EIR process is starting, and again, there, we, we really need to have public participation. I know there's a lot of passion out there about the landfill, and this will be an opportunity for people to speak up and give input. There are two scoping meetings coming up, as Supervisor Cosmickey said, one's tomorrow at two. There's also an evening meeting Thursday at six PM, March eleventh. I won't get into vaccines. I know we're going to be having presentation, and I know that Tracy will be talking about it, but there was a very successful vaccination event at Blotto, vaccinated seven hundred people. We, several of us were involved on a, a call last week with the Governor's Office on vaccines. I spoke to Assembly Member Robert Rivas about it. It continues to be a concern that we're not getting as many vaccines as we need for our county, although we are getting significantly more, which is great news. I was concerned, and I did speak to Assembly Member Robert Rivas about the fact that with the announcement of forty percent being allocated to low-income zip codes, which is a good move on, certainly in terms of bringing greater equity to the state. Unfortunately, for Samia County, us being dominated by really one zip code, we're not going to be able to participate in that. So that is a concern, but hopefully we can work through that and move forward with addressing our own equity concerns in terms of dealing with farmworkers and, and others in, in the higher-risk communities, which I know we are working through successfully right now. Supervisor Cosmickey mentioned this, yes, Economic Development Ad hoc was, was a, I think it was a really good meeting. And it just, again, you know, we can't say it enough, but it reinforces the fact that we really badly need more in, revenue increases in our county so we can deal with things like our county roads, so we can deal with all the, the big issues that we'd like to try to bring to the community. And so that remains a very important area that we'll be working on. We did have the Library Ad hoc Committee, and that's another area that we would love to see an expansion of the library, and I think we're going to work very hard toward getting something done on, on the library once and for all. It's, it's something we've been talking about for a long time. We've got to be realistic about what we can afford, but I think it is something we're going to work very hard on, and I know Supervisor Cosmickey and I are definitely on the same page in that regard. On the CSAC training, I was just going to highlight a couple of things that it was, the two days were very interesting. One was, we got a, kind of a Finance 101 on the background, on financing and, and how we are where we are today with the state and the money that we get from the state. During the retreat, Ray and staff went through this already with us, but there was a more detailed presentation made by someone who's worked with Governor Brown over the years. Anyway, it just reminds us that we are, we essentially get a property tax, we get eleven cents on the dollar. I think a lot of people think that a lot of that money flows to the county. It does not. Eleven cents on the dollar is all we get, and again, it, it just reinforces how we need to look at other revenue sources. They also mentioned the fact that, I don't remember the exact number, but roughly fifty counties out of fifty-eight or so have a lobbyist in Sacramento. And I think, I know it's something that we've tried to have before, and it wasn't, I guess, the right person, but I, I do think that that's something we should actively pursue again as a Board, and I think it's something I would like to see us have on the agenda at some point and talk about. It's a very cost-effective way to bring money to your, to your county, and there was all kinds of instances where lobbyists can make a huge difference for you, so I think that is something important. The last thing I will say is that I have, in District Four, appointments, I have two vacancies for the Fish and Game Commission. They don't have to be in District Four. They don't have to be in my district, so if anyone out there is interested in serving on the Fish and Game Commission or knows of someone who might be interested, please have them reach out to me. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Supervisor B, Gonzalez?
It's been a very busy couple of weeks for me. I, too, attended the CSAC training for the new supervisors, and it was highly informative. It was both Thursday and Friday from eight to one, so it was considerable. They covered a lot of information, but we were given some good tools in terms of supervisors and routes to go. I also participate in the weekly CSAC updates, which are on Mondays and Thursdays, provided my schedule can accommodate it, and that, too, gives us an overview of the vaccines, unemployment, positive numbers, deaths, and so forth, even fire, wildfire fires throughout the state. So that, that's a very informative meeting to be attending. It just goes so fast, and the numbers just, you know, zoom by. In terms of the broadband, at CSAC, they did mention that, and I questioned when and how soon would this come in, and so funding's not even there yet. So I know that we are all wanting it statewide, you know, all the counties want it, but it's just not there, and so it is something significant. I met with the Economic Development Corporation regarding ethics on four, for broadband. I met with Samia Rotary for their access community regarding, their access committee, sorry, about broadband, and so there's a, there's a huge need, and we're all asking for the same thing, but there aren't any answers out there. It's, it's in the works. When we say in the works, we're talking years away in terms of bringing something, which I was highly disappointed to find that out. But somehow we have to find a way where all of our concerted efforts can be combined, so we're not all trying to recreate the wheel. I also took a tour with our County CIO of the, some of the departments. I was thinking that we were going to see all the departments of it. It was a long day, but I did see the jail expansion. I went out and visited the, the new Behavioral Health Building, and then the transitional housing, and I was highly impressed so, for the things that I saw. So thank you all the departments that are doing that. I was amazed, because again, I didn't have that information prior, and it was, I, I just was very impressed. I have also been involved with the Juvenile Justice Committee, and there, there are two items on the agenda today. There are weekly subcommittees where they're meeting with the partnerships, the various agencies, nonprofit agencies that are involved, and trying to see how we can address the, the realignment and the juvenile justice to keep the juveniles out of the criminal system, and so I'm impressed. All of those individuals are working together. There are also weekly, excuse me, monthly meetings for the multi-agencies. I sit in on that capacity, but there's a lot of work being done, and I just thank you all for, for all your hard work. I appreciate it. Let's see. I have been meeting with the first five, and I attended their Strategic Planning Commission, and I know that that's a, that's an agency. We want to make sure we can kind of pull into the juvenile justice as one of the multi-agency partnerships, so if we can see that happen, that would be great. I did take a tour of the landfill, and I did not realize how much science is involved in the landfill. I felt like I attended a science class at the time, just so much information was coming in, and I, I know now we need to take the word DUMP out of our vocabulary and refer to it as a landfill, because that's what it is. And so I made the mistake of saying that out there on the tour, and I was promptly scolded. So just, we, we just need to look at that. I'm looking forward to the presentations this week that Supervisor Cosmickey mentioned. There are two. There's one on the tenth and one on the eleventh, and it looks like they'll both be bilingual, which is great. I have been participating with Supervisor Hernandez on the Public Defender Ad hoc Committee. We are in the final stages, and there's a meeting this week with, with all of the parties, so there should be some sort of final determination soon, and I'm excited about that. But as Supervisor Hernandez said, that it was a concerted effort, a lot of time and hours went into it, and the devotion from the five community members, I can't thank them enough for all the hard work, because it was a significant undertaking to read all the applications and come up with some finalists, and then we reviewed them and rated them and scored them. Again, I look forward to, to being able to present that out. And so my last concern is, in terms of ad hoc reporting out, you know, we're sitting here, Supervisors, and we're giving you little bits and pieces of what we've done and what we've covered. How can that information be presented more broadly and specifically a tax sharing agreement and the vaccine, because I'm, I want more information, and I know you can only give me what you know, and in the couple of minutes that we're sitting here, I, I understand, I understand the Brown Act and so forth, but people want information. I mean, and I know, because I'm sitting on the, the Public Defender ad hoc, I can't share it either, because it's confidential, but there's just information that the community is, is wanting and without violating any kind of Brown Act or propriety or confidentiality. So if we can talk about that, Ray, you and I...
Well, go ahead and bring that up right now, Barbara, because I don't, I want to make sure we're transparent why we can't do that. They need to contact the ad hoc committee, not that Supervisor, but you go ahead.
I know, but, but I, I can't contact a member on that ad hoc, because they can't...
You can have, you can have that person that is interested to contact them or to contact Ray, but I'll let Barbara say that.
But is there a question about whether it should be placed on a future Board meeting, properly agendized, so the rest of the Board could have an update on it?
Yes, yes.
So if that's the request, then the Board can schedule that if the Board would approve of that request?
I'm getting phone calls for both those aspects, and I can't share that information with them, because I have no knowledge of it, you know, I'm not sitting in on the, and I know that both Cosmickey and Tiffany...
Have that person, have that person call me or whoever is on the ad hoc committee. That's the best way, I would say, but I can be wrong on that.
There's that perception that I'm passing the buck, and so I'm dealing with that, too.
Well, that's, that's what this, that's what we're talking about here, is we're talking about, we want to be transparent, but we also do not want to create a violation of the Brown Act. So the best way to do that, what we've done in the past, is that's why you have an ad hoc committee. Those ad hoc committees meet together. There's nothing to report sometimes. So if there's nothing to report, you don't report out, you go ahead and you have another meeting, but if there is any questions, you're not passing the buck, you're handing it off to the appropriate person that is in, somewhat in charge of that, that certain item.
Right. And I, and you don't have to explain the Brown Act or any kind of violation. I totally understand that, but I'm saying... understand that, but I'm saying, people are coming for information. I am one of those, them, and so I'm just asking if that, that can be addressed somehow, some way.
If I may, go ahead. I was just going to say, you know, historically, the ad hocs are to formulate, I guess, and, you know, trying to come up with a solution to matters. It takes time. The public defender's contract, it, it takes time to go through the process. The grant that we've been working on wasn't just in a couple of days, we've been working on it for a while. And when we first started the process, I expressed to the board members, hey, this is going to be, possibly, you know, getting funding out is going to be April, could be even longer, depending on the process, and depending on what we, what we initiated and the scope, and then what was going to have to be looked at, because there's a lot of, and there's just so many other elements to it. So it takes time, and I think that this is what this forum's about, is to, is to actually just give an update. A lot of times, we don't have all the answers yet, because we're formulating, we're working on. But it doesn't mean that we can't agendize it, and I think that's what you're saying, and I think that's something that we can do. We can say, look, we can agendize a certain item to give a progress report, where it does get out, get a little bit more detail, but again, there, it'll be a topic of conversation, because we may not have all the answers yet, because we're still working on, on, on the items. So I just wanted to express that, we can do that.
I think, I think that would be good, because then it shows the public that I, I don't have the answers, I can't tell them what I don't know, and then that way they'll say that, oh, she's really not lying to me, she's.
Well, sometimes the ad hoc doesn't know either, because we're still, we're still working on it. And so that's, that's kind of the point.
Yeah, and I, excuse me, I, I think that probably in particular, you're, you're getting a lot of questions, as we all are, about vaccines, for example. Certainly, without violating the, violating the Brown Act, you can reach out directly to Ray.
To Ray.
You could also reach out directly to Tracy. Also, because of vaccines and, and pretty much everything, COVID is being presented, you know, at every meeting, and, and, and what Tracy will be presenting, and the doctors, I think is pretty much what we know. I mean, you know, right up to date. I mean, there's nothing that, yeah, anyone's holding back. I do recognize that there's a lot of interest out there, a lot of questions. The ad hoc committee, Supervisor Cosmickey and I, and, and everyone, Tracy and Ray, are greatly concerned about how do we do a better job of communicating and getting the word out there? And, and there are some things that we'll probably touch on today in terms of, you know, things that we're looking at to do, because not everyone is on Facebook, not everyone is, you know, looking at a computer or looking at Benito Link, but we do need to do a better job.
Bring it back to Supervisor Gonzalez.
No, I'm, I'm good. I look, you know, look forward to that, but I have questions, too, that I'll be asking of Tracy directly today. Thank you.
Uh, that's your report?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board here. We'll look at the consent agenda. Does any board member wish to pull any items on the agenda?
I would like to pull item 20, just for more explanation, please.
Which one?
20.
20.
20 or 23?
20.
20.
No, 23 is a regular.
23 is a regular agenda. Go ahead, Bob.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull item number seven and number 10 as well.
And 10.
Any other items?
Mr. Chair, 15.
15?
Was it 15 or 16?
Fire and safety improvements?
Yes. Okay.
And, okay, any other items?
17? Somebody say that?
Is that the stereo cycle?
Yeah, a quick question.
Any other items? Any other items for the board?
No, thank you.
How about from the public? Any items that we should be pulled from the public?
Please press star nine or the raise your hand icon on your screen. Number ending in 312, please unmute yourself. You have been unmuted. Also press star six to unmute. Moving on. You've been, you've been unmuted?
Yeah, hi, this is Kevin Barcellos. I, I didn't hear whether item number 10 got pulled.
Yes. Yes, it did, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, for the public?
Number ending in 312, you've been unmuted. You can unmute yourself by pressing star six. No more comments.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board here. It's, right now, we're looking at motion to approve the consent agenda, less number 11, which we're going to pull to the next board meeting, number seven, 10, 15, 17, and 20.
I'm okay on 17, actually, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we will take out 17. So once again, what we're looking at is to approve the consent agenda. We will pull to a later date number 11. We will pull to discuss seven, 10, 15, and 20. What's the wish of the board?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with those exceptions.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Second.
Aye.
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 Five zero, Peter, give Peter the second. Okay, we'll bring up number seven. This is county admin for our CIO, Ray Espinosa.
Yeah, question? Let me, I, I pulled it, and, and I mentioned this to Ray yesterday. I don't have any issue with it, it's just that in reading through it, and I, I think it has to do with the state and, and county, and, and I'm learning all this, but I just want a further explanation how the, the lease works. It, it would appear that we're leasing it to the state, and then they're subleasing it back to us, which is an interesting arrangement. So anyway, I just was curious about a bit more explanation.
Yeah, so AB 900, we raised approximately 15, we received approximately 15 million from the state, and, and there's still 5% pending that will be reimbursed by the state, but in order for them to make themselves hold, they are selling bonds against the, the jail, so it's a way for them to raise capital. We had originally agreed with, to these terms when we first entered an agreement with them, and this is just moving forward with the bond sale. They have three years from the date they start reimbursing us to be able to do this, and timeline is, is really tight, and, and that's why this project, the jail's almost completely constructed. And so, so the state has very tight deadlines for us to follow for them to be able to sell bonds.
Okay, thank you. And just an update, when do we actually expect to have the jail finalized? I know it's very close.
It is, we are looking, and we, mid, we're aiming for mid-April for the occupancy to be issued, and then looking at 90 days after that for it to be moved in, so, so probably mid-July.
Okay, thank you, Dulce.
Any other questions on number seven? Any public comment?
Comment, please press star nine or the raise your hand icon on your screen.
Bring it back to the board, what's the wish of the board?
I move that we adopt the resolution authorizing the execution and the delivery of facility, sublease for the jail expansion project, AB 900, to the state of California, bond sale.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
I'm just checking, yeah.
Aye.
Staff recommendation?
Oh, okay, so there's, there's parts.
There's three items, yeah.
So we're adopting the resolution, sorry. We are also authorizing certain actions there within, and approving the cooperation agreement with the Public Works Board, and delegate authority to the staff to amend the jail service contract.
Let's try this again.
I'll second, I'll second that as well.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 It's a five zero. I did not forget number 10, but we're going to go back to that at the end, not at the end, but the, at the end of consent. 15, resource management.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board.
Good morning.
Randy Young with the Resource Management Agency, Mr. Espinosa. This item is actually, what you're approving is a $50,000 transfer from the general fund contingency to pay for some immediate fire safety improvements that have been identified by the Fire Marshal as being needed at the Behavioral Health Annex, I would call it, on the north end of the Behavioral Health Bill, the Health and Human Services Building. When they move out to go to the new Behavioral Health Services Building, we want to move child support services into that facility, and there's some things that we just need to do to make it safer from a fire safety perspective. And so that's what this item is about. Be happy, happy to answer any other questions you might have, and have other staff standing by if there's more detail needed. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Chair? Yes?
Thank you. Yeah, I pulled this item. I just wanted to really, well, thank Fire Marshal Bedola, does a great job. It really stood out to me that, you know, that we didn't have, it sounds like we didn't have smoke detectors, working smoke detectors.
Correct.
And a fire alarm system, and I think we all know that's a safety, major, major safety and liability issue. So I, the reason I wanted to pull that is to just make sure that, you know, other buildings in our county aren't falling through the cracks in this regard, and that, you know, perhaps we should do a review of our facilities in this way, in this manner, just to make sure that we have working, you know, fire alarms and smoke detectors.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Supervisor?
Thank you for the question, it's an excellent question. You may recall that when we presented the facilities plan to you about a month ago, maybe, the timeframe eludes me, a few weeks ago.
Board retreat.
We identified the need for a million dollars of kind of immediate fire safety improvements countywide that came out of that study, and we're planning to propose that as part of our budget, suggest that we fund that as part of our budget proposal for next fiscal year. So it's a great question, and we believe that we're trying to catch up and get ahead of it by that action.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I just wanted to add that that was part of the whole plan. We had a complete, just the facility plan, growth, storage, as well as safety, so we added a safety element to the master plan for facilities, so that's part of, part of this, so.
Great.
Thank you for the question.
Any public comment?
Would like to comment, please press star nine to raise your hand, or the raise your hand icon on your screen. Elia Salinas, you've been unmuted?
Hi, good morning. I hope I, you all can hear me, and I've stopped having difficulty, technical difficulties here. So I wanted to pull this item as well, so thank you for getting it pulled. I have two issues. One is, if you could, and I've said it many times, if you can add one or two more sentences to the item, to the line item, to give the public a little bit more information, because they don't look at the packet, they get confused, and the packet is large, so they don't know where to go find the information. So if you can just add one or two more sentences to explain what this is all about. And last month, I asked a question and, to Fire Marshal Bedoya, and it was not answered, and it was regarding the businesses being in compliance. I mean, it's coming up, it, it was, I go way back to the Fire Department back in the 80s, okay, and we used to go to every business every year to make sure that they were in compliant, so they could continue to operate, the doors not being locked in the, in, in the back, making sure that there's an exit and, egress, ex, egress and egress. And I don't know that that's being done any longer, it doesn't seem like the Fire Department's not visiting businesses. I know that the fire downtown last year, that door was locked, and it was blocked because there were things behind it. So is that no longer a policy that I've missed somewhere along these, these decades for the safety of the public and the businesses themselves and their, their customers? Are businesses being visited by the Fire Department to make sure that they are up to fire code? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments?
HFD Charlie Bedoya, you've been unmuted, you have three minutes.
Hi, this is Charlie, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I didn't know if you wanted me to answer that, or just keep it, but we, we are in compliance, and we are continuing on with our inspection program.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Any other public comment?
No more public comments.
Bring it back to the board, what's the wish of the board?
I'll move to approve. I'll move to approve item number 15, a budget adjustment of $50,000 from the general fund for fire and safety improvements at the Behavioral Health Building.
Just for the record, this is a budget adjustment, therefore it requires four fifths of a vote. What's, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you get a second?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor now?
Aye.
Aye. One more time, Peter. Five zero, motion passed. Thank you, Peter. We'll go to number 20, from the Resources Management Agency, and I think Ms. Bee Gonzalez pulled the item?
Yes, I did. Director Young, I was just hoping that you can explain it a little bit more, because I'm speaking with our CIO, and then one other supervisor. Just maybe explain the amount that we're actually authorizing, because I see that we are adopting plans and specifications to, to be outside of the competitive bidding, and I just want to know what dollar figure are we looking at to forego the, the bidding process? The report says 10 million, I understand the whole process is 25 million, but are we, are you asking us to authorize 10 million without a competitive bidding process?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Gonzalez, that's an excellent question, Mr. Espinosa. We're not asking for a specific dollar amount at this time. What this resolution does is it enables me, with your authority, to enter into emergency repair contracts countywide for damages that resulted from the late January storms. We still are not asking for, we've estimated those damages to be around 25 million altogether, and we could, if we had the funds available, could do as much as 10 million this, this year. But you're not authorizing me to go out and spend $10 million. It's going to depend on a couple of things. Number one is whether or not the state eventually includes us in the statewide declaration, and then state and/or federal emergency response funds would become available, and we would use those funds if they could advance them to the, to us. The only near-term action that we're planning would be to come back to your board next meeting to authorize an immediate paving repair and storm damage, culverts and roadway shoulders. shoulders repair project, and that would probably be a million or less, we need to consult with the CAO to make sure we have the right dollar amount, it would be likely a transfer from your strategic reserve, so that we can get some immediate work going, even while we wait for the state's declaration, and so we're, we've estimated those damages, but we're not gonna proceed unless we're sure we have the funds available, we're not able to, because the county just doesn't have the financial capacity.
Okay.
I hope that's a response.
Yes, and that was explained to me, but that's not how I read the item, and so I just, I just wanted to make sure it was, it was fully clear, so thank you.
Any other questions from the board members? Any questions from public?
If you wish to speak, please press star nine to raise your hand, or the raise your hand icon on your screen. Elia Salinas, you've been unmuted, you have three minutes.
Hi, good morning. So with all due respect to CAO Reyes Espinoza, I would just like to point out to the board that we need to be cautious of how much authority is actually given to the CAO without approval of the, of the board, so that's just my concern, is giving over too much power, I'm not saying that it's gonna get abused or anything like that, I just need to, I just wanna caution the board, because this is just not the first item, there's been other items that have been approved to give authority, and I'm just pointing that out, so thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, ma'am. Any additional public comment?
No more comments.
See, now we'll bring it back to the board, what is the wish of the board?
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we adopt resolution, under item number twenty, adopt resolution delegating authority to the RMA Director to enter into emergency repair and replacement contracts to remediate a local emergency pursuant to Public Contracts Code Section 22050.
And this does also require a four-fifth vote, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero, motion passes. Now we'll head to number ten, number ten is the Emergency Medical Services. Chris, are you on the line?
Good morning, yeah.
Who, who wants to take this one?
Well, I'm, I'm the one that pulled it, I think that probably all of us up on, up here saw yesterday, there was a constituent raised an issue in regards to this, I don't think, I personally don't have a problem with the, the item, but the question had to do with the ambulance service, and this particular constituent was concerned about the fact that her insurance company was not, was not an in-network provider with this ambulance service in our county, so that she was not able to get reimbursed at the level that she would have liked to, and so I'm just, I would like to hear a little bit more about that, and what insurance companies our ambulance service are contractually working with. Thank you.
Chris?
I'm not prepared to speak on AMR's insurance providers that I'm not aware of or privy to, I do know that they do have contracted rates with Medi-Cal and Medicare, and that is a state and federal requirement, as far as private providers that I'm not aware of, when we review the contract in its entirety for the next five years, we will definitely visit that and be prepared to answer questions with the new contract.
And that's, contract is up in 120 days, is that right?
Correct, we'll bring that to the board within the next 60 days, but we hope to start on July 1st.
Can we please inform AMR about the insurances and ways to
Yep.
ensure that our constituents are covered?
We will have that discussion with AMR, we've brought that to their attention, and we will discuss it.
Okay, Supervisor Cosmickey?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I had another, I had the same concern brought up, and I also, separate concern was the allegation that AMR refused to transfer non-insured patients who were then having to be flown out, I don't, you know, I don't have the specifics beyond that, but that was something that was brought up, so it's just maybe something to take note of as well in the conversations, and then I know CAO Espinoza, we had an exchange, and there was some discussion about potentially, you know, having a fee waiver system at some point, I know that's, you know, a negotiation issue, but, so that maybe is something that could be a possibility as well, I just wanted to bring that to light.
Can you bring back the first one?
Yes.
Refused to transfer, so they had to fly out?
Yes, I had a constituent say this last night, I hold these
Okay.
virtual town halls, and she brought that up, so that was just a specific accusation, and I just wanted to bring that to light.
Chris, who makes the decision on whether that patient is transported via vehicle or via the helicopter?
The helicopter is based on trauma criteria or medical criteria based on our policies, and they're very strict policies, we can't just call a helicopter because the patient requests it, they have to have a need to go to a higher level of care, and that has to be justifiable, and as far as transporting a patient in an ambulance, AMR does not ask for insurance information that is gathered from the hospital after the patient is already delivered, so they transport payers, non-payers, it doesn't matter, if you call 911, they're there to offer you their services.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
I did have a question, in terms of when the contract expires, are, is this the only firm that we can contract with, or are there other alternatives, competitors out there that would serve San Benito County?
At this time, we are not exploring other providers for several reasons, the main reason being we are grandfathered in by the state, so we are not required to go out to bid, and the second reason is it's about $80,000 to explore going out to bid, and with experience from our neighboring counties, AMR's been the only bidder, Santa Cruz County went out to bid just about a year ago, and AMR was the only bidder, Santa Clara County had the same experience, and Monterey County has recently gone out to bid twice, and AMR's been the only provider bidding there. So to go out to bid and have them come back with a deal that we could have negotiated and saved taxpayer dollars doesn't make a lot of sense at this point, they're meeting their compliance, they're meeting their criteria requirements in the contract, and they've been a great partner for the past 25 years here.
Right. Okay, yeah, that was my only concern, but I like the idea of the fee waiver, if that's something that you can, you can bring in, and then definitely working with the insurances, because that out-of-pocket cost for many residents is, financially can wreck them, you know, when they see a fee that comes across like that, but, okay, thank you, you answered my question.
Thank you.
Any other board members? So just in the next month or so, Chris, it looks like insurance issues are probably the top of the line, a fee waiver, and then the other thing that I'd like to see is some type of a compliance outline, for instance, to explain to the constituents, these are the rules that they must follow in order to have a person flown out, or they don't ask for insurance upon pickup, things like that, that way, these rumors that we hear out in the public, we can combat that with some black and white information, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am. Peter, anything from your side?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. We'll ask for some public comment? Public comment, please, this is your time to speak and...
If you'd like to comment, please press star nine or the raise your hand icon on your screen. Elia Salinas, you've been unmuted, you have three minutes.
Hi, good morning. So basically, American Medical Response has a monopoly, is what I'm hearing.
Yes.
I, I know that Supervisor Jim Gilio was trying to see if he could find some other companies that would be interested in coming to San Benito County. In February of 2020, a year ago, they came before, and they got a 20% increase. At the time, I stated, people cannot afford a 20%, people don't get raises for 20%, we, people are two paychecks away from being homeless, and then bam, COVID hit. If it weren't for the protections of non, kicking people out in my, sorry, it just went out of my head, anyway, you can't, you can't evict somebody, anyway, if it hadn't been for that, there would be a lot of people being evicted right now, based on, based on the ambulance rides and getting those bills, and then it affects your credit report because you can't pay it, and it goes to collections and blah, blah, blah. I, I believe somehow that there should be an ad hoc committee, and go back and see if we can find other ambulance companies, there are numerous ambulance companies in the Bay Area that are smaller than AMR, that are probably hungry for this contract, and I do not know, I know that, I trust Jim Gilio that he did his homework quite well, but I don't know what companies he contacted, but a 20% increase a year ago, and then a monopoly that we don't have a choice but to negotiate with them, well, if we don't have a choice because they have a monopoly, they're gonna get whatever it is they want, is that really fair to the constituents of this county? No, it's not. We need to do something, and I, please, I, $80,000, at a cost of 20% increase for the entire county for, for this, I think that you owe it to the, to your constituents to see if you can find somebody else, instead of allowing a medical, American Medical Response to monopolize the entire county. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Kevin Barcellos, you've been unmuted, you have three minutes.
Hi, this is Kevin Barcellos from Hollister, so I have posted in a few places on Facebook regarding this issue, got close to a dozen people who were in the situation where they needed to take an ambulance ride, they, they were transported either to Hazel Hawkins or Attendant Tibidod, had insurance, employer provided insurance, which was not, which was not in-network with AMR, and from what we can tell, the only commercial insurance that AMR accepts in San Benito County is Kaiser, so, so the process is, your insurance company makes a payment that is somewhat, is much less than the cost of the bill that's been presented, based on the base rates that, that the board agreed to last year, and you get balance billed the difference. In most cases, this is thousands of dollars, and in my personal case, it was $6,000, and you're then put in the middle of a negotiating battle between your insurance company and AMR, and at the end of the day, AMR's gonna come after you for the balance. So, so it's great that AMR has negotiated rates for Medicare and Medi-Cal, that's, that's legally required, but it doesn't appear that any other commercial insurance is, is accepted as in-network in San Benito County, and I don't think that's acceptable, and you should at the very least be asking from AMR for trip stats over the, over the last two, three years, whatever the, whatever the window is that you want to be looking at, with exact numbers for how many, you know, how many trips were paid for by, by private insurance, and how many of those were in, in-network or out-of-network, and how many were, how many folks got balance billed as a result. Thank you very much for your time, and appreciate your attention to this matter.
Thank you, sir.
No more public comment.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board, any final comments from the board? Mr. Chair? Yes?
I would like to see options explored for another provider, at the very least, I think we should make an effort to look out and see if there, if we can at least find somebody else, and if we get the feeling like there could potentially be multiple bids on this, then I, I believe it's worth, for me at least, I think it's worth exploring the possibility of going out to bid.
Okay, we'll set up an ad hoc committee, the two people will be Supervisor Cosmickey and myself. And we'll do the same. Any other comments from the board?
I think we should also, this was already brought up, but I think, piggybacking on what the speaker just mentioned, and the constituents sent us an email, and we should definitely find out from AMR exactly who they have as in-network insurance companies, and that should be part of the, certainly the bid process.
I already sent the email out.
Yeah.
So, we're on it.
Perfect.
Any other comments from the board? What's the wish of the board?
I believe that, given the fact that we are where we are, we have to, I would suggest we still have to approve this, and so I would, to give us some time to explore this, so I would make a motion that we enter into an interim limited-term agreement to continue provisions of service and provide for the period from the expiration of the prior agreement, which is February 28th, until the effective date of this agreement, which is today, March 9th. Secondly, approve a contract extension of no more than 120 days with American Medical Response, AMR, which would take us to June 30th at the latest, and authorize the Chair of the Board to sign the agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter? I can't read lips, do you say? Put your thumb up if you're yes.
Yeah, there it is.
Okay.
Sorry, I accidentally double muted myself. I said aye, but is there any way we can, or would I have to bring this at a different time? Can we get a report from the ad hoc before the June 30th contract?
Of course.
Since that is when we're gonna be negotiating, I think it'd be good to have that information ahead of time.
Done. Five zero?
Uh huh.
Okay, that concludes our consent agenda, we'll go to a regular agenda, we'll start off with the Health and Human Services. Ms. Tracy Belton?
Yes, good morning. Just get the PowerPoint up, please.
Thank you for sending that PowerPoint to us, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Tracy, can I say something before you start? I don't wanna steal your thunder, but, but I just
Please, please do.
I just wanna thank yourself, staff, for such a great event on Sunday. There was 700 people that were vaccinated, we had 700 vaccines, and as I understand, unless you correct me, they were all used, there was no, nothing left over, there was no orphans, and if I understand correctly, we had people that didn't show up, and you had a list of people in sequential order that you would call, therefore, the fairness and equity of this process was followed to a T, and I just want you to understand that that is what I wanna see, that is what I believe in, is the fair and equitable way to do things, so I appreciate that immensely.
Thank you, we appreciate that comment, and yes, we agree, that is our plan, and has been our plan the entire time, and we plan to move forward with that same plan, so we appreciate that, and we will have a slide presentation on the Mass Acton Clinic on Sunday, our public health staff will present that with some pictures as well, and, you know, since, since you mentioned it, I also think it's really important that we recognize the volunteers, we had so many wonderful volunteers that helped us, and we could not have had a successful event without them, so from vaccinators down to people checking people in and directing traffic, and so we just appreciate all that. So thank you for that comment. So thank you for that comment. We appreciate it. So we'll, we'll move to the next slide. Um, so, um, you can go to the next slide. I just want to introduce Crystal really fast. Um, so, um, all through this pandemic, we've been working with the County Office of Ed and Superintendent Crystal Lamont, as well as the, um, all the other superintendents in the county. And we meet at least, uh, twice a month. Um, initially, we were meeting once a month. Um, Supervisor Hernandez has sat on some of those calls, um, not recently, but, but has in the past. And, you know, I just asked, um, Superintendent Lamont to join the board meeting to provide you an update on one, the school kind of reopening plans for the county, as well as the hard work we've done around vaccinating, um, education. And I just felt that it would be nice for you guys to hear from her, um, and get her perspective on how things have been advancing. And then if you have any questions for her on school reopening. So Crystal, I think you're there?
I am. Good morning.
You mean? Yeah, thank you for joining. Go ahead.
Yeah, good morning, Board of Supervisors. Uh, it's a pleasure to be here this morning. Um, thank you, uh, Executive Director Belton, for, um, inviting me this morning to provide a brief update. I know how busy you are, and then I will leave it open for some questions. Um, so before I give an update on schools reopening, um, I want to publicly thank, um, our team that has worked, it's been a year now. We're gon, we're coming up to the March, um, 13th, uh, I call it anniversary, that we want to put behind us. Um, and during that time, we have, correct, as Tracy had mentioned, met weekly. And then as we moved into the surge, it was every other week, uh, with both Tracy Belton, Lynn Mello, and Dr. David Giliducci have been on the calls. With all of the, uh, district superintendents, uh, County Office of Ed, charter school, and private schools, as well as membership from, uh, Robert Rebus's office and Anna Cabrera's office. So, and, uh, Peter Hernandez, Supervisor Hernandez, has joined us as well. Um, so it's been a joint effort, uh, as we've really navigated something that we have not historically seen in education. Uh, so I need to thank all of our partners, um, as we've really done the best that we can. Uh, we, as you know, have had seven of our rural schools open for most of the school year. Um, the County Office of Ed was also open with our Early Childhood Special Education Center, and then also our alternative education programs. Our juvenile hall program, uh, we have been in-person, uh, education the entire time. Our teacher was committed to go in and continue to provide an education for our students that are in juvenile hall. Um, and then our other districts, uh, depending on the district, um, have not either been open, but they have provided small cohorts as allowed through the California Department of Public Health guidance. And so taking a look at the guidance and bringing, um, some of the most at-risk, um, population of students onto campuses in small cohorts to provide some mitigation to learning loss. At this point, um, as we've moved, and, and I think you're all familiar, that our governor, our assembly, and our senate have passed Senate Bill, Assembly Bill 86, which provides, um, some financial compensation to our districts if they're able to open by the April 1st deadline. If you are in the purple tier, you can open up transition kinders through second grade. You're not allowed to open up middle school and high school until we end up in the red tier. So depending on where we navigate with our tiers, um, would depend on whether the high school, middle school age can open. Our districts that are currently closed, um, are working right now to reopen as they are allowed to. And a big factor in that is obviously, um, supporting and engaging with their staff so that they can receive the vaccination. Um, we are here to support the Board of Supervisors in any type of engagement with the state. I do have to agree, I believe that we are not receiving a fair, equitable allocation. I'm on calls each week with my other county office counterparts, um, and, uh, looking at where other counties are being allocated and confused why we're not being allocated, uh, what I believe we need. So example, Supervisor Kosmiki called me and said that at the state, they're reporting that we have 136 educators across San Bernardino County. Well, that is inaccurate. We have over 1,400 educators across San Bernardino County. That includes custodians, maintenance, we're all part of the educational institution in order to reopen. And so we are committed to support the Board of Supervisors any way that we can, um, in the educational sector to support receiving additional allocations for vaccines. With that said, we have received allocations through public health. Uh, Tracy and her team have been extremely supportive. We have worked with all of the district superintendents. When we first found out we were going to be allocated, um, some vaccines, we had to prioritize. We've got 1,400 people that we need to, um, engage and get inoculated, but we're only allocated so many per week. On that call, it was agreed upon with the district superintendents, with public health, um, that our educators that were actually in-person with students for more than 15 minutes at a time are more at risk of contacting COVID. Therefore, uh, we focused on making sure that we vaccinate our educators that are in-person. Mind you, many of our educators have worked with their local providers to receive their vaccines. So we're working on both ends with that. Um, and so we are continuing to work with public health each week, um, to engage and, uh, receive as many allocations as possible. And our goal is to try to get all of the educators across San Bernardino County, um, vaccinated by the end of this month so that our schools, um, that can open are ready to open so that their staff feel comfortable with that. Um, so that's where we're at. I'll stop there. I just gave you a lot of information. I apologize, but as you can see, there is a lot going on. Um, I never thought in my role as county superintendent, I would be, um, an expert on vaccines and, and the medical side, uh, and trying to get, uh, our kids back in school. Um, but, uh, that's where we're at at this point, so I will pause.
Thank you. Tracy?
Sure, are there any, any questions for Crystal, or, um, so you have an opportunity to add any questions?
Mr. Chair, yes.
I had a question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead. Yes, go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, and it was more towards you, Tracy, um, just kind of trying to understand a little bit how they came up with 136 educators in, in San Bernardino County? Um, and I'm, you know, it probably would be an assumption, but it just, I don't, I don't, yeah, I think it'd be pretty easy to find out based off of the amount of school districts we have, and the amount of students that we have. So I'm, I'm curious as to how they're getting their information, or why, why they interpreted that we only have 136 educators.
Yeah, that's a really good question. I actually have a pending email with the state on how they calculated those numbers. Um, I just checked as Crystal was talking to see if they've replied yet, and I haven't heard back. So, um, we have pinged them to ask them how they, they came up with that data, and, uh, we'll continue to pursue that. And once I get an answer, I'd be happy to let you all know.
And Supervisor Hernandez.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Supervisor Hernandez, this is Crystal Lamont, so again. Um, I will let you know that the state did survey each county of how many educators we have. So they, they were provided accurate information from my office several weeks back. Um, so, uh, you know, as Tracy's engaging on her side, um, they do have that data from my office. Um, and so that is definitely a more accurate, um, view of the growth in San Bernardino County and the amount of educators that we have. So I will support, um, you know, our county any way that I can to make sure that the state rectifies that number.
I appreciate it, Crystal. Yeah, actually, and Mr. Chair, just to kind of report a, a little bit, I had, I have had conversations with, with some board members from the school districts that are, you know, they're concerned. They, they want to open up, but they need the vaccine. So is it possible to make a request for the ad hoc, uh, that's involved with the vaccines to maybe have these? You know, and I imagine you already are, but maybe just for my, uh, understanding, uh, to engage with the school districts so that way maybe you can formulate a better argument to the state on why the equity is so large and, um, you know, the gap, the gap of equity is so large in our county. Um, it might help with the cause of trying to increase the distribution of vaccines to our county. Just a thought.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm, uh, a couple of comments, and, and certainly I agree with Supervisor Hernandez. And, uh, the ad hoc committee has been discussing, um, uh, the issue in regards to not just the totality of vaccinations we're getting, or vaccines we're getting, but also specifically how it impacts the, the schools. I was going to make a comment, maybe, uh, people ask, how did they come up with 136, uh, you know, educators for our county? Maybe it's the same way they came up with putting, putting us in San Juan Keaton Valley. But at any rate, um, what I was going to ask you, Crystal, is, um, I know the goal is if by April 1st, assuming we're staying, we're still in the purple tier at that point, which we may or may not be. Hopefully, we'll be moving to the red tier soon. Uh, but if we are in the purple tier, you said, um, extended kinder through second grade, uh, how many people, how many teachers and staff are we talking about in total that would need to get vaccinated in order to, uh, meet that goal by, uh, April 1st in our county?
Uh, so thank you Supervisor Tiffany. Um, I, I can pull up my sheet as it's an ongoing, um, change to it. So I would guess by the end of this month, we would probably need about 600 more vaccines. Um, and on Wednesday, I'll have more of an accurate number. That's the morning that we meet with all of our district superintendents. We do, and public health. We do have quite a few educators that are from outside of San Bernardino County, and so they're able to get their vaccine in Monterey, Santa Cruz, Santa Clara. So we'll have a better picture on Wednesday because our districts are reaching out to their educators. Like, if you've gotten your vaccine, please let us know so that we have an accurate number, knowing what is our target by the end of this month. The other thing is, is because right now we're still in the purple tier, opening up the TK through second grade, how many educators are in that area? And that making, that, you know, that's the next round of the priority, um, outside of our seven, um, districts that are open for in-person, and then we do have some cohorts in-person. So I can make sure, you know, Tracy's on those calls to get that information back to you. But I think by Wednesday morning, we'll have a better and a more accurate, um, account of what we will need.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's critical because although, of course, we are focused on those that are currently, uh, in-person, which, which only makes sense, particularly given the limited supply of vaccines. Obviously, the other schools in districts would like to, uh, move into in-person by that April 1st date. So I think identifying the numbers, um, and then, of course, uh, working, uh, with you, Tracy, to see if we can, um, hopefully get enough vaccines so we can allocate enough to, uh, by April 1st to, uh, address all those needs. That would be, uh, certainly a major priority for us. Thank you.
And just one last comment, uh, Supervisor Tiffany. We are moving into allocating, uh, all of our educators that are in-person. As of this week, when we finish with our allocation, um, they will all have been vaccinated. So we are moving into the area where teachers are teaching distance learning. And then each district superintendent, they prioritize who is on their list. We do not do that. I, they know their employees better than we do, um, with a focus, age is a priority, and if there's underlying health conditions. Um, so we want to get our, our most vulnerable, um, you know, inoculated first. So we are moving into that priority, which is really exciting.
Great. Thank you very much.
Any other questions, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. First off, I just want to thank Superintendent Crystal Lamont, oh, you know, it's very clear to me that she and her team are doing, are extraordinarily dedicated on this issue, and they're doing a really great job for our, um, community, our, 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 our teachers, our education staff, and our families. Um, but I will say that, you know, we have to get our, we have to get our teachers vaccinated, our education staff vaccinated as soon as possible. And, um, I can just speak from experience, like thousands of other parents in the community, that this year has been, um, very challenging for young people. I, you know, to a certain extent, I don't, you know, to a certain extent, it's been a lost year for our kids, and, and some more than others have probably, um, experienced more difficulty. But even, I think, you know, families with a child that has high academic standards are, you know, these kids are having difficulties, and I know this personally. And I think we're going to have long-term, um, mental health issues that go along with this. And so this is a real crisis to get these kids back into school as soon as possible. And, you know, particularly our public schools, you know, because inherently, uh, I think the, as Superintendent Lamont alluded to, the, the private schools have, um, largely been back in, in instruction. And so unfortunately, this is another area where our most vulnerable residents are falling further behind than, than perhaps students and families that are better off. And I, so that's a very particular concern of mine, and so I just want people to know that, for me personally, getting our, our teachers vaccinated as soon as possible to get these students back into schools is, is an extraordinarily top priority. And I know there's a lot of debate about whether, um, you know, whether teachers should go back or not before they're vaccinated, and, and unions not wanting to have teachers go back. But the bottom line is that, you know, a lot of families aren't going to send their kids back, uh, until the vaccinations occur. And so, um, you know, we, we really have to make sure that that's a priority, and I know that is a priority for our public health staff. I did have one question, um, if Superintendent Lamont is still on board, is, um, I don't know if there's any more, um, and if I'm off-base here, please correct me, if there's any more on the likelihood of the potential for extending the school year due to the, uh, from the state level, due to the, um, you know, the falling behind that our students have had? Has there been any talk about that? Have you heard anything more on that?
Um, so Supervisor Kosmiki, uh, part of the Senate Bill, uh, 86, Assembly Bill, uh, is additional dollars to mitigate the learning loss. And so each district board would have to, um, determine if they wanted to extend the school year or offer a summer session. Um, so I believe that many of our boards are looking at that because the state will be providing additional funds, um, to help mitigate the learning loss. So that is and can be a possibility for each one of our districts if they chose to have a summer school, um, to help mitigate part of, um, and, and you are correct. Uh, you know, being in-person is, is the best possible way to educate students. And so if there is learning loss, um, each one of our districts can choose if they want to offer, uh, extending, if they do go back in person, extending the school day, um, you know, doing remediation or enrichment after school, and then also the possibility of summer school.
Thank you.
I hope, does that answer that for you? Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Perfect.
Any other questions from board members? See none? Carry on, Tracy?
Thank you, and thank you, Crystal. I know she has to jump off, so thanks for being on. And we'll chat soon.
Thank you, and have a good day.
You too. Okay, next slide. So Dr. Giliducci is going to present these slides. Dr. G?
Uh, good morning, board. Uh, yes, uh, just a kind of overview of what's happening statewide on our case counts. And as you can see, we've had a pretty remarkable decline from, I would say, an extraordinarily severe surge over the winter months. Um, you know, we, we fully expected at the beginning of this, we would see waves of, of, uh, case counts go up and down. But, uh, this last thing was a tidal wave, and, and I hope we don't see more waves going forward. Um, but the remarkable decline is really encouraging. I think you'll notice maybe toward the end of that graph on the left, that it is starting to flatten a little bit, and maybe we're going to level out somewhere around kind of June levels, um, which is still a significant amount of virus, but certainly much better than what we just experienced. Uh, next slide, please. This is also, uh, mimicked, uh, on our hospitalizations, and we're seeing that come down. And then the ICU bed availability continues to go up, so that's also a good sign. Next slide. This is the San Bernardino, uh, tier assignment. Uh, as you know, we're still in the purple tier, but I'm happy to, uh, report that as of, uh, 2:00 this morning, uh, we learned that, uh, we, uh, now meet the, the conditions for red tier. So if we can continue this for- So, if we can continue this for one more week by next week, next Tuesday, depending on how this current week goes, we could go down to red tier. So, we're excited about that. That does open up, you know, or at least relaxes some restrictions that, you know, all of us are familiar with now in the purple tier and I think another sign of steady improvement. Next slide. Here's our current case counts. I think last time we talked, our active cases were in the hundreds. Now, we're down to 31 active cases. We still had 61 deaths. Quite a few people recovered. And let's go to the next slide, please. And this is some modeling coming from, from some of the modeling groups that shows that we do expect worst-case scenario, another wave coming, perhaps late March or April through May. But that is the worst-case scenario and that wave should be a lot lower than we had originally thought it might be. So, that's also good news. Next slide. Let's talk about vaccine here. Next slide. So, this is the state dashboard showing about 10 and 1/2 million administered doses statewide. That's for a population of 39 and 1/2 million. So, that represents about 26%. In San Benito County, we're close to 11,000 doses administered. For our population of 65,000, that is around 16%. So, 25% statewide, 16% San Benito-wide. We have communicated this disparity to numerous groups, including the Governor's Office, the California Department of Health and the third-party administrator. They're all aware of the relative mal-distribution of vaccine to San Benito County and we're hoping that this gets rectified soon, especially with incoming influx of agricultural workers with the growing season coming up. And certainly, we talked about the importance of getting our educators vaccinated and getting schools opened. These are some of the issues that are slowing us down. But let's look at progress. Next slide. This shows the, kind of our main dashboard of residents that are vaccinated by age group. And we're currently at about 50% of our 65 and older. So, roughly 50% of our population is still at the highest risk for death or serious disease related to COVID. So, we still have some work to do there. And as you can see on the graph on the right, that the second doses are proceeding, but, you know, obviously, second doses and first doses require the same vaccine and so, that does constrain our supply. Next slide, please. So, this is a proportion of first dose and second dose. And so, as you can see, when we go, in January, it was mostly all first doses, a few second doses. And then, as you can see, the proportion of second doses does go up because those who had first doses obviously are due for second doses. So, we're, our vaccine is being distributed kind of between those two priorities. The Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, the Johnson vaccine, is going to be a lot easier because it's only a single dose. And so, we'll be tracking those numbers once we do receive some shipments there. Next slide. And this is our equity distribution in San Benito County. Last time I looked at this, the Latino population was less than the white population, the two major ethnic groups in our county. And I'm happy to report that now we've had, we now have higher numbers of Latino, currently not in proportion to the population, but it's improving. And that's largely a factor of starting to move to more targeted vaccinations. We're still focusing on, you know, of course, early on, we had Phase 1A. We have some other occupational groups which may not be representative, but as we reach out to certain groups, we're starting to improve those numbers. So, I anticipate that those will become more in line with our county population as time goes by. Next slide, please. This shows the distribution for this week to our various partners. As you can see, there's not a whole lot of vaccine to go around, but this is how it's being distributed. Next slide. And let's see, so right now-
If you can take a second over here if you want me to-
Okay. That'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. If you could just go back one slide, I just wanted to touch on one thing really quickly. So, we do, I just wanted to bring to your attention that we do have one new provider that came on board this week, Dr. Gahida's office. She's one of our newest providers. You'll see that we paused allocation to our own office to give us the time to recover from the mass vaccine clinic as well. This week, these allocations are 600 of Moderna, and we're getting our first allotment of J&amp;J vaccine as well this week. So, we got 600 of J&amp;J and 600 of Moderna in this allocation. I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. Next slide. So, there are a couple of things that I wanted to provide an update on to the board and to the community. So, as you're all aware, back in January, we stood up a county interest portal for the vaccine and stood it up rather quickly. You know, hindsight is generally 20-20, looking back on it, there were some things that we probably could have done differently and more effective. But what we've learned through this process is, number one, individuals who registered on the interest portal, not only registered one time, but also registered numerous times, which created a large influx in numbers on the portal. Another mechanism that we didn't have in place is, is a way to find out when individuals did receive the vaccine. And so, it's, we spent tireless hours calling individuals off of an age-based priority to offer the vaccine to them. So, what we did initially is we worked with the local vaccinators to ensure that this was equally distributed and that they were working with their patients and my office was working with the patients who didn't have a listed provider. Through this process, several other providers were given vaccine from a federal level. So, some of our pharmacies were given vaccine. And we don't have, number one, we don't have that information. And number two, we don't have any communication with those providers. So, as of late last night, I learned that CBS, that our local CBS may have some vaccine from a federal allocation and have been vaccinating as well. And so, it really has created a lot of confusion in the county for our residents because they're not sure where to go, they're not sure how to get it, and we're doing the best that we can to push this out to individuals. So, for our mass vaccine clinic, I just want to touch on that briefly because individuals have wondered how they were contacted. So, we distributed out vaccine to the sectors and worked with our local providers. So, for the food and ag industry, we allocated a certain amount to them and worked with Grower Shipper to coordinate that group of individuals. They worked with the employers as well as the individuals who registered on our portal and pulled those individuals off that. For the education and childcare, we worked with Crystal, as she indicated, as well as our local childcare resource and referral agency, GoKids. And they helped us assign those spots to those individuals. And just remember, this, each one of these appointments is an actual call to the individual to reach out to them, schedule the time, and this is 700 appointments that we actually scheduled. For the emergency sector, emergency services sector, I actually coordinated that list with our local emergency services providers that fall in that bracket. And it's not just, when we think of emergency services, it's not just law enforcement, some of our lab workers and other individuals. So, we reached out to them. I am happy to report today that we are almost completely, we have almost, with the exception of maybe like four or five individuals who will get vaccinated this week, our emergency services law enforcement sector is fully vaccinated. So, we have, I believe, like one individual from CHP, a couple other individuals in probation. I think we have maybe one or two more and then, we will be fully vaccinated. So, that's an accomplishment for our county and we'll be able to shift some of those vaccines to a different sector. And then, the 65 and older sector, what we get is they pulled the names off of the list and called individuals. There was probably 12 of us calling last week to schedule, to schedule vaccines for the mass vaccine clinic. We had 200 slotted for the 65 and older and it took us numerous calls to get those individuals filled in those slots. We tried to go off an age-based priority, starting from oldest to youngest. It was a daunting process and the majority of the individuals that we reached out to had already been vaccinated. So, it was, it was a good thing to hear that people are getting the vaccine and finding it in other locations, but it's a long process for us. So, with that being said, we've been, as I've advised, MyTurn is coming to our county and we are, it is our turn to switch. So, we will be turning off our portal today and we should be advancing to MyTurn on, hopefully by Friday. I did another onboarding call with them yesterday. We have other meetings with them today. And if you see on the right-hand corner, this is what happens when you register on MyTurn. So, the difference between MyTurn and our portal is MyTurn not only registers you, but it will ping you when it's your turn to make an appointment. So, right now, how we've been coordinating appointments is through the local providers in our patient pool. This will open up the entire provider pool to all individuals to select an appointment when it's their turn. And so, not only are you expressing an interest, but you're also, you'll be able to choose an appointment when it's your turn with one of the providers. And so, we're onboarding our county and we're actually looking forward to this. So, we're going to put out a press release today. We're going to be sending an email to all the individuals on the portal. So, and we're also going to try to do an automated call to the individuals as well in the event that they didn't have a email registered on our portal to tell them to shift to MyTurn. Unfortunately, there is no way for us to shift the interest portal individuals to MyTurn. So, we just ask that you go to this portal and register. If you don't have a computer, there's a phone number. Unfortunately, I didn't list it here, but it will be in the press release and we'll ensure that we get that out in the email and the call that will be made. But it allows you to call the number and they will register you for MyTurn as well. So, you don't have to have online access. So, I just want to just recognize all the people who've helped with this process and calling individuals. It's been a struggle, but we have not given up and we appreciate the patience from the community. We know that people are frustrated and we hear your frustration and we're hoping that this is going to help rectify some of the frustration. And so, again, you know, we appreciate that. And we are still going to be calling off our portal list this week. Some of our local providers are going to be vaccinating some of the 65 and older for us. And so, you may receive a call from one of our local providers. And that's been a really successful partnership. The pharmacies and doctors' offices are willing to help us off of our interest portal to make it fair for all individuals. And so, we just appreciate that partnership as well. I think that's it on MyTurn. I reported out that we did get the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine this week, 600 doses, and that is a one-shot process. So, that's exciting for us. We also had a conversation with OptumServe, the testing site, and so, we had a meeting with them yesterday. We hope to stand up our first mass vaccine clinic with them around March 21st. More information will come on that as we're securing a location as well as times with them. We hope to do three days a week with them and that stands up at the same time with MyTurn. And so, that's where you will also get to select an appointment with the OptumServe site and they go hand-in-hand. And OptumServe gets their own allocation of vaccine as well. And so, we're really looking forward to that. And I don't have much more information besides that's our tentative start-up date. And as we get, as we secure more information with them, we'll make sure that we provide it out to the public as well as the board. We also had our onboarding with Blue Shield, the third-party administrator. And, you know, there's a thought process behind this, so the, for equality and efficiency and safely accelerate the administration of COVID-19 vaccines, the state has asked Blue Shield to become our third-party administrator. It seems like they have plans underway. The MLU is currently under review with our legal counsel. And the state will allocate the vaccines directly to the providers to maximize distribution efficiently and equitably. And moving forward, you know, the third-party administrator, when we had the call with them, they did ensure us that they will continue to work with our local health jurisdiction each state, each week to discuss the allocation and vaccine distribution to our community. So, we look forward to that partnership as well. And we feel that it will be a heavy lift from us as a local health department and we look forward to that partnership with them as well. I think that was it on this vaccine. Next slide.
Wait a minute.
I don't know if there are any questions on vaccine before we move to the state.
Yes.
Yes, there is.
I have, I want to go back to the slide for the distribution allocation slide, please.
Sure.
I had many questions and your presentation answered a lot of them. So, thank you very much. This is, this is what I've been waiting for, for weeks and weeks. And so, looking at the allocation slide, question for you. When do you get your numbers from the state on how many vaccines that you can expect for the following week?
Generally, the allocation email comes Tuesday, not always, but in general, the information comes on Tuesday. And then, the next step, the next process that we have is we reach out to the providers to see how many vaccines they can take. And so, we're working, our pharmacist, Mary White, works directly with the providers and has conversations with them on how many they can take. Kind of backing up to our mass vaccine clinic, the reason why we had so many vaccines was because it was the Pfizer vaccine and a lot of our providers weren't prepared to receive the vaccine and/or distribute the vaccine. And so, there was a very limited amount of Pfizer that went to our local providers. This week, this is for the Moderna and J&amp;J vaccine. And so, these were what the sites wanted as well as what we felt would be manageable for them and this was a partnership. So, I can talk a little bit about this. So, Dr. Breck got 100 and those will go to his patient pool. Hazel Hawkins Hospital is doing 100 to sectors and that we are pushing this to them off of our interest portal and 100 to their patient pool. Lucky Pharmacy wasn't able to take any vaccine. They are working on second doses and so, they didn't feel they had the capacity. Safeway Pharmacy has taken 200. Those are in partnership with the food and ag industry. So, Grower Shipper is working with Safeway on those 200. All those 200 vaccines will go to the food and ag industry. The Health Foundation is still paused. We didn't take any at this time. Primary Care Associates took 300. 100 of those will go to our 65 and older population that will push that list to them and 200 will go to their patient pool. Dr. Percival is remaining with his patient pool of 100. Icare Pharmacy is going to be using 200 for education. We're helping them coordinate that education. Crystal's working on the list with the providers and all 200 of those will go to our local provider, our local educators and childcare. We've also pushed foster parents into that pool. So, we distributed out that 200 to education, foster parents and childcare. And again, working with GoKids, County Office of Ed and our local foster care, which we manage at my office as well. And Dr. Gahida, this is her first, her first allocation and this will go to her patient pool. Hopefully, that kind of answers some of those questions.
One of my other questions was also, how do you determine who gets them? And you somewhat addressed that regarding Mary White reaching out to the providers. And I understand the significance of the Pfizer and the extreme cold temperature that those have to be dealt with. And so, I know that provided some, or presented some potential issues with those that didn't have the freezer to be able to deal with that. So, thank you for that. I'm reluctant to bring this conversation up, but I'm going to go there. You answered about the portal, so thank you very much. So, today's the last day that they're going to be using the local portal. And now, you want all the residents to start utilizing the MyTurn.ca.gov site to register, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, okay. And then, I also was, was going to ask about how are you reaching the individuals without technology, access to technology? You did that. So, I look forward to this press release that's going to give all the information that we're going to need because that telephone number is going to be definitely in demand. The, another question I had was regarding Blue Shield. And how do you anticipate that working, the rollout? And you did mention that you have had an onboarding meeting. Can you share any more details about that in terms of Blue Shield and, and their distribution? Because it sounds like San Benito County and all the other providers in the system will then get their vaccines from Blue Shield. Is that correct?
Yes, that's our understanding, that they will allocate directly to the providers, yes. And there's more to come on that. I wish, I wish I had more information Supervisor Gonzalez, but, you know, like I said, we're just learning. We just submitted our plan to them and as more information becomes available, we'll make sure you're aware.
Okay. And again, I appreciate the information because I'm starving for information, so I can share it. And then, the, the issue that I'm reluctant to touch on is the pause situation with San Benito Health Foundation. Has that issue been resolved? I've seen the letter from the county to the Health Foundation. I've seen the letter from the Health Foundation to the county. I personally wasn't- I personally wasn't happy about the tone of either one of them. And I'm not interested in us getting in a pissing match with each other. But has this issue been resolved so that we can stop seeing zero for the Health Foundation and for them to be in a perpetual state of pause? Has that been resolved to your satisfaction?
Sure. I can't answer that completely, but I can tell you that we have received their response as of Friday to some of our requests. And we, as a team, feel pretty comfortable advancing vaccines to them possibly next week. We do need to, as an ad hoc committee as well, to further discuss this. But we do feel that we are ready to, based off of some of the information that they've provided us on Friday, we feel we're ready to move forward with them and repartnership with them. We will have an ongoing conversation with them and need to set space with them, and haven't had that opportunity as of yet. But we do plan to have that conversation this week. So thank you for bringing that up.
Well, just for the record, since Supervisor Gonzalez brought it up, until they say, until they admit that they were at fault and they did not follow guidelines, it is my opinion, and my opinion only as a board member, one of five, they should not receive anything. So that's just, I want to go on record with that, because once again, what's going to prevent them from not following the rules if they can admit that they broke the rules? So that's just my opinion, my opinion only.
Well, I'm still trying to ask some of my questions, and I disagree respectfully with you in that. Because looking at the letter, I do see there's a promise to, and an attestation that they will follow the guidelines, so.
Did they admit, did they admit that they?
Again, I don't want to get in a pissing match with you either. But again, it's gone on long enough. They've been in a perpetual state of pause, and I am not on the ad hoc committee to discuss this. I would passionately be in there advocating for that site to start getting the vaccines. I'm not. And so just, I'm just asking Tracy, county, the Health Foundation, that can we just, whatever we need to do to address it? I'm looking at that, as I said, I did not like the tone of the county letter, and I did not like the tone of the Health Foundation letter. So I, well, if you look at both of them, you'll see.
I read both of them, ma'am.
But anyways, there's finger pointing, there's accusations, there's threats. And it doesn't need to rise to that, and that's why I'm asking. So do we have to take a vote as supervisors right now to find out if we're going to go ahead and reestablish lines of communication? Do we have to wait for another two weeks till we have another update from the ad hoc, from the Health Foundation, excuse me, from public health? I'm frustrated with this. It's over a month.
Mr. Chair, can I jump in here?
Yes, sir.
And I'm sure Supervisor Cosmic, you may make some comments. And I understand there's a lot of passion on both sides of this issue, both up here on the dais as well as out in the community. The ad hoc committee, along with, you know, the doctors, and Tracy and Ray and I met extensively on this issue. I frankly think we have reached a pretty good resolution to the situation. And I know Supervisor Gonzalez, you haven't been, because you haven't been on ad hoc, you haven't been privy to some of the previous back and forth. Frankly, I think the tone of both our letter and the tone of their response was pretty measured in my mind, and a big improvement from the tone. I do, I would say that, you know, what basically we are saying is that we will move forward with the Health Foundation. We want to move forward with the Health Foundation, getting them back in the mix with vaccines. And as Tracy said, we are planning to, I think, starting next week. They do play an important role in our community, and we've been saying that all along. We, at the same time, to speaking to Supervisor Medina's comments, we are, at the same time, insisting that going forward, they strictly follow the guidelines. And we will have zero tolerance in terms of going forward with that. But assuming they strictly do follow the guidelines, and they have pretty much stated that they plan to do so, then there shouldn't be any further problems. And I certainly hope that is the case going forward, because we do want to work with them. So anyway, those are my comments. And Supervisor Cosmic, I'm sure you can add to that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, so I understand what Chairman Medina is saying. Understand what Supervisor Gonzalez is saying. I think, you know, if I can just underscore from Supervisor, echoing the part about Supervisor Tiffany saying, measured, and I think, I think going forward, you know, it's important for the public to know that if we do allocate doses, that, as Supervisor Tiffany said, it's an absolute zero tolerance. They do, they go outside of the tier once, and they're done. And that, and because there's a public trust issue here. You know, there's the old saying, you know, fool me once, shame on you. Fool me twice, shame on me. Thank you, I almost didn't get it. And so that really is really the, I think, the most important part that the public should be aware. At the same time, there certainly is a recognition that the Health Foundation is serving a community that perhaps we don't have the capacity to serve in the same, in the same productive, productive way. And so, you know, it is important that we do have a mechanism to reach our most vulnerable residents. That being said, I will say this publicly, that I was disappointed in the Health Foundation's unwillingness to acknowledge that they went outside of the tiers when the facts are what they are. They went outside of the tiers. I think they've even acknowledged it in their own reporting with the numbers that they've reported, as far as the number of farmworkers, several hundred. And again, I'm all for farmworkers getting vaccinated in the right priority. But reporting that several hundred farmworkers were vaccinated during 1A, and we all know about the stories of prominent community members who were vaccinated during 1A. And so they went outside of the tiers. You know, it's undeniable. And so it is unfortunate that we can't have an acknowledgement of that for the, just at least for the notion that our public can fully trust them going forward. But I will say that I think Supervisor Tiffany sort of alluded to, that I do believe they understand that we are not going to be tolerant of going outside of the tiers again. And I do think that they have the best intentions in mind, despite the fact that they went outside of the tiers. They were vaccinating, for the most part. I mean, I don't think it's excusable at all, and I represent San Juan Batista here. I don't think it's excusable at all what happened with the Rotary Club. I do not. I just think that that was wrong. And so they, there it is right there. I'm not going to beat around the bush. They went outside of the tier when they vaccinated the Rotary Club members. They did. And so to not acknowledge it and to say that you didn't go outside of the tiers, that's why I'm saying it's disappointing. But I do think, for the most part, they have the best intentions in mind. They do have the infrastructure to get it done. And so as long as there's a zero tolerance policy going forward, and there's that understanding, then we have to give them another shot. No pun intended. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Hold on one second.
I'm sorry.
Supervisor Hernandez?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So it's funny, because through this whole conversation, I'm wondering where we were going to bring up the updated guidelines. It's kind of the argument that I made in the initial conversation when this got brought up, I believe, two weeks ago. Basically, the, in my mind, that's why government, it's top-down, doesn't really affect the best outcome for the community or for those they're supposed to represent. You know, right now, we've had a top-down approach from the state on all different levels. And I've heard at different times, different supervisors mentioned the exact same thing. So, and let me clarify. So I was looking at this attachment. It's an updated COVID-19 vaccine allocation guideline. And the reason why I say it's a top-down failure is the moment that the state sets out rules that have a certain expectation, but they're so high-level, they really don't touch ground, you're going to have situations, you're going to have, you know, a different way to, you know, basically, they're not logistically practical. So they find themselves, as they get the distribution to these different agencies, like the Health Foundation. And personally, I mean, me for the record, I defend 100% the Health Foundation, not for any other reason, but because I know that the distribution process, in my mind, was failed from the get-go. So they just, like I said, with this attachment to the public health letter, COVID-19 vaccine allocation guidelines, so it's an update, I'm sorry. So beginning March 15th, it says, "Healthcare providers may use their clinical judgment to vaccinate individuals ages 16," that's 1-6, "to 64." So 18, age 16 to 64, who are deemed to be at the very high risk for morbidity or mortality. That's right there, pretty point-blank clarifying what they made a mistake in the get-go. They expected folks to follow the tiers, but it wasn't that simple. And I remember even bringing this up with my CIO about the disuse element, right? Because these things are frozen, they get thawed out, all this, you know. And I know that there's different vaccines, so it's not always the same. But at the end of the day, if these vaccines go bad, that's something the state completely discourages. So all of a sudden, they came up with another update, which says, "To minimize disuse, allocations or doses are made on the assumption that immunizations will be accepted by some, but not all, who are offered the vaccine, and then adjust later allocations based on the number of doses that are accepted." So ultimately, it says, "Providers may temporarily adjust prioritization based on other resource constraints while continuing efforts to immunize higher priority groups as soon as feasible." My interpretation of that says, oh, if you can't necessarily get to those folks that are in line because they don't show up, or they deny the vaccine, even though they fall into the tier, they should have gotten it, but they didn't, figure out who else you're going to give it to. Come up with a priority list. Actually, Tracy even clarified, and she said, oh yeah, that's what we did. And or even Supervisor Medina mentioned that with the whole vaccine clinic. We had people show up, but people didn't. I mean, we had a whole, you know, the vaccines, the mass vaccination clinic, where some folks didn't show up, but we had people in line, ready to go, to make sure that you had some folks.
But they were in the right tier, Peter. They were in the correct tier. They weren't out of tier.
Yeah, it doesn't change the reality, Mr. Chair, and I'm, you know, 100% agreeing with you.
Well, it does change the reality, Peter, because they're in the tier.
If rules were perfect, then we should follow them. But when it says to use your own clinical judgment to vaccinate individuals 16 to 64, that right there, point-blank says, hey, we kind of messed up. We should have done it this way from the beginning. Now, after March 15th, go ahead and start to distribute. In my mind, Mr. Chair, and I'm not trying to disagree with anybody on the board. This is our community. The Health Foundation has served the highest population. They've done, in my mind, they've been the most successful at distributing the vaccines. Why are we working against our own community? Why don't we just figure out what it means to move forward? And instead of blaming somebody, let's just actually say, let's come together and figure it out. At the end of the day, the state's going to have an expectation. If there's a gray, and we don't know how to interpret, let's lead instead of follow, and actually say, you know what? We're going to have to come up with our own local level adjustment to distribute according to the rules as best as possible. But if, at the end of the day, we're going to have waste, or we're going to have issues, we need to fix those issues and not wait for the state to tell us how to solve our own problems. Those are my honest convictions, Mr. Chair. I think we need to work with the Health Foundation and stop trying to blame them. Anyways, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, no, I appreciate all the feedback. It's facts are facts, and I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Chair, a couple more comments. First of all, let me just emphasize, and it's not lost in all this discussion, we are moving forward with the Health Foundation. I think we've reached, hopefully, a resolution. And as long as they stay strictly within the proper tiers, we will be providing them vaccines going forward. The other point I wanted to make, and I'm glad you brought it up, Supervisor Hernandez, is that one of the areas that the Health Foundation argued on their behalf or in their defense was this issue of orphan doses. And, you know, they argued, as you were commenting, Supervisor Hernandez, that when people didn't show up, they had no alternative other than to turning to people that maybe were outside the tier. Generally, that's just not correct. All providers, and this is something we discussed in our ad hoc committees, meetings, all providers should be prepared to have people available in the wings that are within the tiers, as Supervisor Medina is saying, as we did on this past Sunday. But they are in the wings, and they are available to come in immediately to get vaccines if there are doses that are still available. And that is something that, again, we're going to be insisting with the Health Foundation that they do so going forward, and something they did not do previously. So I just wanted to clarify that, and that is key. As they go forward, and any provider goes forward, you have alternative people available at a moment's notice. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Okay, where were we? We were going with, carry on with Tracy, I believe.
Sure, so just some brief state updates. Next slide?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I got a lot, all this discussion. Tracy, could I ask you one quick question? If we go back to the vaccine allocation that you had, that slide, that one there? I'm just curious, so there's 1,200 vaccines this week, and you're showing where they're getting allocated. But as you point out, this is not second doses. So when we hear a number like 1,200 are provided, that is, I'm understanding that additionally, there are second doses that are provided as well? Can you explain how that works?
Yeah, that's correct. So generally, the second dose matches the first dose. So again, this works with the pharmacist, Mary. So she gets the second dose allocation, I think, on Thursdays. Don't quote me on that one. And then they generally match the first dose. So if Hazel Hawkins got 300 Moderna, the second dose that comes in that time period matches the first dose, and it gets allocated out to that same provider. And so we only reported out, sorry, we only reported out first doses on this slide, because it gets a little bit confusing. And I think what most people are interested in is knowing how many new vaccines are coming into the county as the first dose, because of the new vaccine in somebody's arm versus a match to the second. Once the CDPH takes over, we won't be doing this any longer. It's just too hard for us to manage. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. So for example, three weeks from this past Sunday, there will be 700 visor vaccines that will be, or doses that will be allocated to us. And that's over and above whatever is allocated for first doses that we generally report.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct. Okay. So as Dr. Gialdetti mentioned, we are hoping and anticipating that we will move to the red tier next week. We will know that for sure. Next Tuesday, we get, that's when the state updates the blueprint for safe reopening. And so we're hopeful. We've kind of done some counting at our local level, and we feel that we'll advance to the red tier. But we won't know for sure until next Tuesday. I did want to just show that the blueprint did advance that there is some changes to be made effective April 1st, outdoor sports and live performances with fans and attendees in the purple tier. There is a capacity of 100 people. So if individuals want to look at this, this is a press release that CDPH put out. It also allows amusement parks that are eligible to reopen in the red tier beginning April 1st. So I would just encourage you all to take a look at this. This document that's at the bottom of the page, it's actually like five or six pages long, but it does show what can advance and how it advances in the tiers. And so I would really encourage you all to look at the website, the covid19.ca.gov. I think Supervisor Hernandez can attest to this. I kind of walked him through the findings and industries yesterday. And it's really a great process. If you just plug in the county name and then the industry, it brings you right to it in your county. And you can also look at other counties in the event that you were interested in seeing what was open in their counties. It's really helpful. And so I encourage you all to take a look at that. But I just wanted to just push this out there for you all, so that you know that this came out on Friday from CDPH. So now I'm going to turn over the presentation to Lynn Mallow, our Deputy Director of Public Health. We're going to do just a brief presentation with some pictures on the mass vaccine clinic on Sunday at Bellato Park.
Good morning, Board and Chairman Medina. Thank you for this opportunity. We had a very successful mass vaccination clinic out at Bellato Park on Sunday, which was serving the Phase 1B, Tier 1 population. And Tracy went over those earlier, so I won't belabor that. so I won't, uh, belabor that. Um, next slide, please. Um, a, and I just want to mention that, uh, public health has been drilling and practicing, um, mass vaccination events for decades. And, um, the, the community has seen it as influenza clinics at the Veterans Hall every fall. Uh, and those are normally walk-ins. This year, we had to figure out with COVID how we're going to do that in a way that, how we were going to do it, uh, without, um, you know, exposing people, uh, to potential infections. So we perfected a drive-through model, although it's not perfect, uh, but we, we used the flu clinics this year to practice, uh, drive-through models. And as you know, we are doing these drive-throughs at, uh, 351 Trespinos Road here at our offices out in our back parking lot. And they've been very good practice, very successful, uh, they've just gotten better and better. And I would like to give a shout-out to Thomas Woodland, our Emergency Services Specialist, who's new on our team this year, who has really done an amazing job of, um, helping perfect this. Um, so as you see, this is the entrance and the screening area, um, and folks come in, and they, uh, are screened, their temperatures are taken. Of course, uh, can we advance to the next slide, please? So, so there we have a team that are looking at all these names that have come from the, uh, interest portal. And I, I, I also, I also want to shout-out to Megan Crable and Tracy and volunteers and public health staff and H&amp;HSA staff who have been exporting names from this portal. It has been countless hours of work, after-hours of work, and I just want to shout-out a big thanks to everybody. So you see all those names on paper there. And so the, the folks are, you know, identifying the patients in the cars and then screening them, taking their temperatures, making sure they're not sick, making sure they're wearing their masks. And then they send them on to the vaccination station. Next slide, please. Um, and, you know, there are volunteers that are directing traffic. Um, next slide, please. And they're coming into the vaccination station through five lanes. And then, um, that's where nurses, physician's assistants, MDs, EMTs, uh, all double-check the screenings, the screening forms, and, um, they administer the vaccination if all is well. Um, and, uh, some of the stations had scribes, uh, along with those licensed clinical staff. There were five lanes, lanes A through E. Um, some vaccinators did their own paperwork, some had those scribes. Um, and then we had to note any, you know, allergies and determine wait times for folks. The standard wait time for monitoring was fifteen minutes, and then those with a history of, uh, any kind of, um, allergic reactions to medications, to vaccinations, were asked to wait, uh, thirty minutes. Next slide, please. And so here you see some of the clinicians at their stations, and then also, we have folks that are collecting those forms. Um, in the, uh, right slide, you see they are collecting those forms to double-check them to make sure that, uh, the, the, everything is filled out properly and that the, um, injection sites are filled out and that the clinician's signatures are on there and that the, um, actual dose, which was Pfizer, this go-around, uh, the lot number and the expiration date are on there. Next slide, please. And, uh, this is where the folks move on from the vaccination station down to the monitoring area, and they wait their standard fifteen or, um, extra fifteen to thirty minutes. And although this, this slide says screening, it's actually monitoring. And so, um, folks are moved on to that monitoring area out there at Bellato, and they wait in their cars. And, uh, we have eyes on those folks to make sure, um, that they are well and that they're breathing properly and they're, you know, not having any, uh, you know, swelling around their lips or their throat, uh, because those are signs of anaphylaxis or allergic reaction. Next slide, please. And here you have, um, the clinical team that is, um, mixing Pfizer vaccine in this photo. And so as you all have heard, um, Pfizer vaccine is, uh, a little more complex. We have four licensed staff here, two pharmacists, two nurses. Um, the process is that you must, you know, draw up sterile diluent, um, and inject it into the vaccine vial and agitate gently, change the needle, attach a new needle to the syringe, then draw up the dose. And so it's, it's a time-consuming process. They did seven hundred of these, um, ongoing. They came at the wee hours of the morning to draw this up here at the Health Department, and then they transported in, um, transport containers that, uh, had digital data loggers. And, um, so they were out at the pavilion doing this, and then we had a shuttle that was delivering vaccine to the vaccinators, uh, all, uh, trying to keep it out of direct light and, um, moving it quickly to the ten vaccinators that were out on the, on the lot. Next slide, please. And so, uh, these are the populations that were served, the sixty-five and older, food and ag, emergency services, education and childcare. Um, at the, next slide, please. At the end of the day, we did have about thirty-eight, uh, no-shows. And so we had a backup list, um, that we called, people were on standby. Uh, we got all those thirty-eight, uh, doses, uh, into the arms of people that fell within the tiers. Um, and we were determined to stay out there, uh, until we got those doses into arms because we were not going to waste any doses. And, um, I just want to say thanks to our, uh, public health staff, all the volunteers, Bellato Park management, um, the shipper grower, uh, all the patients. It was, um, a very successful event, and, um, uh, we were just very grateful to be able to serve our community in this time of crisis. Any questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
All right, go ahead, Peter.
It's kind of a little bit back. You can hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, um, sorry, uh, and, and this is actually more to Tracy. Thank you for that presentation, and I'm glad everybody was able to, uh, you know, the seven hundred was able to get vaccinated. Um, it was more about the, the vaccine distribution. What, what is the difference percentage-wise between rural and urban counties? Um, do you have that info, Tracy or Lynn?
You mean the allocation of the vaccine numbers, or what do you mean?
Yes, yes. So, so there's probably, I would imagine there's some really clear data on the San Joaquin Valley, the distribution, since I would say it's, it's pretty much a rural, um, area. Uh, and, but also, when it comes to the, um, the vaccine distribution with the unknowns, why do we have so high of a unknown vaccine distribution? Or what is the unknown?
Oh, you mean the category, right, Peter?
I think the unknown category, uh, refers to the races or the ethnicities.
Yeah.
Unknown ethnicities.
Is that what you're talking about, Peter, on that chart where it had other or unknown? So that, this is something that we've seen when we review the data in the care system, which is the entry system, and, and that comes directly from the providers. So the providers that are, um, giving the vaccine need to be really diligent about tracking that information. And we've noticed on the report that some of our local providers aren't putting in the ethnicity into the system. And so it's really, it's really important for us to capture that. And so, um, you know, that emphasis on the individual provider to track that. But I think that's what you're referring to, is the ethnicity of what has been vaccinated so far. And I think that's what you were looking at on that chart.
Yes.
And so, you know, we probably should send out a, a little reminder to our providers to take a little bit extra time to try to track that and get that, because we're the ones that are responsible for putting that data into the care system. And I don't know, Dr. G, he's our, he's really good at our data. I don't know if you have anything else to comment on that, Dr. G.
Yeah, I'll just say that the ethnicity, um, issue has been a problem statewide. It's often, uh, frequently not put into, um, the registration system, so that data is, uh, often blank. There's also some complications with mis, mixed ethnicities and which one is the predominant one and so forth. So, um, so that, that continues to be an issue.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. G, Dr. G. Um, so yeah, when it comes to the difference, so to clarify, Tracy, the question is, is what is the percentage of the distribution of vaccines to a rural county? And then what is the, the difference between an urban county? So, um, I'm just curious how the distribution level, you know, because obviously, the, the reason why I mentioned rural is because we're predominantly ag and, uh, Latino farm workers. So I'm, I'm curious what, what the difference is, um, between these urban counties that are also getting vaccines.
So, uh, just, just so I understand your question correctly, you mean how they're allocating the vaccine to us?
How, how they're allocating, yes.
Doctor, do you, do you have any details on that? I think you've done some review of our data.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it's a great question, Supervisor Hernandez, and, uh, one that we've also asked. Um, there's not a lot of transparency on how the formula is, um, on the allocation. We've asked many times, has, have, um, other rural counties, uh, because everybody's noticing this mismatch, like the one I mentioned earlier. But I think that, uh, we have some theories, and actually, the CEO, Blue Shield, kind of, um, supported this. Um, but our theory is that because we don't have any MCEs in our county, and most rural counties don't, those are the multi-county entities, the Kaiser, Siders, Dignities and so forth. Um, those were a significant source of vaccination for, um, these larger counties that have those organizations. So they were getting this kind of side supply that, um, that smaller counties like ours were not getting. And so, um, we think that has led to the, um, you know, the mal-distribution that I referred to.
Dr. G?
But I don't have, uh, statistics on that. Um, sorry, inter.
Oh, Dr. G, just, you know, looking at what you're saying is, I think we're at, if you just take the raw numbers, including, you know, just total dosage, I think we're at eighteen percent of population. Santa Cruz is in the thirties. So what you're saying doesn't, doesn't really, uh, make sense. Because I think, don't quote me, but Monterey somewhere in the twenties, Monterey County, but Santa Cruz jumps up to the thirties. So how did that happen?
Yeah, fortunately, I have access to data from both Santa Cruz and San Benito County, so I have a chance to directly compare them. And, uh, that seems to support my idea that, um, you know, our, um, multi-county entities in Santa Cruz County, we have Kaiser, Sider and Dignity in Santa Cruz County. They've been able to vaccinate a, a fair number of people, uh, by getting supply from their mothership organizations, bringing it to Santa Cruz, or in many cases, vaccinating Santa Cruz residents outside of Santa Cruz County. Uh, we just haven't had that kind of outside supply.
So Monterey County doesn't have all those different outlets like, like, oh, MCEs like Santa Cruz does?
Uh, you know, I'm not sure who they have there, but I know that they have also written a letter of complaint about under-distribution. I think, I think we're both suffering from it. Um, I think San Benito is, um, uh, is affected even more than Monterey County.
Yeah, I, let me just jump in here. Um, uh, I had a conversation with the, during our CSAC, um, training with a supervisor from Monterey County, and they're very much in the same boat as, as we are here in San Benito County, uh, which is ironic, because of course, both of our counties are very heavily, um, disproportionate with, uh, farm workers. And, um, so I know Monterey County is fills, in, for whatever reason, they also, I think, don't have the large providers like Santa Cruz or Santa Clara. Um, the other thing that I was going to mention, um, I kind of alluded to this earlier. You know, we're, we're also kind of falling in the middle here. Um, recently, there was talk about, uh, additional vaccines that are going to farm workers, but primarily in the Central Valley. Uh, now, uh, you know, the governor has announced that the four hundred, uh, you know, lowest and zip codes in our state are going to get additional vaccines. Uh, well, guess what? San Benito County doesn't have any of those zip codes. Um, so, you know, we're getting, we're getting it from both ends, you know? In other words, we don't seem to rise to the level of getting attention from the state for farm workers and other, uh, at-need populations, and yet, we are, you know, significantly below, um, other areas and other counties. So it's very frustrating, and I think, um, we continue to, uh, you know, talk to, um, the state and our representatives about this, uh, inequities. But so far, uh, you know, it doesn't seem like they've addressed it with San Benito County.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, so Monterey County doesn't have any MCEs, and I think that's part of it. I, but I also would say Chairman Medina's point, that we're still below Monterey County, and, um, to a certain extent, I know Monterey County hasn't necessarily gotten as many as Santa Cruz County, but, um, we're still sort of at the bottom of the, the list here in the Central Coast. And, um, so I'm, you know, this continues to be a frustration, I think, for all of us. You know, we hear from residents, and I think that oftentimes, we hear the same thing, probably, that, well, Santa Cruz County, why are they getting so many? What's wrong with you guys over there in San Benito County? Why are you dropping the ball? And obviously, that's simply not the case. And, um, so I wonder if there's something else we can do as a board? You know, Blue Shield's coming on as a third-party administrator. Um, at the very least, I think we should write some sort of a letter to them. Um, I, I would like to see the state correct this discrepancy. I don't think it's even fair for us to go forward with an equal distribution from this date on. I, you know, which we're not getting that, by the way. So I, I think there, you know, for me, we really have to stand up and demand a correction to this issue. There's, the state, there is a solution. There, there is a solution for this, this problem. It's, it's to give the counties that have been short-changed on vaccine doses more going forward. You know, and I think that really, then the counties that, such as Santa Cruz, it's just simply not fair. And I hate to stand up and just stomp my feet and say it's not fair over and over again, but what else are we supposed to do? It's not fair. And I just, you know, again, I know we've already sent a letter to the governor. Um, I, maybe there's, maybe there's some, we could have some discussion of what we could do. I know Monterey County has sent multiple documents to higher entities. I've seen, you know, Supervisor Alejo has, has talked about this on social media quite a bit. Um, so I don't know, is there something else we could do? Do we, as a board, do we try to communicate directly? Would Blue Shield have the discretion to make that level of a correction? Uh, because all these things are, we're just, we're falling through the cracks everywhere. We're falling through the cracks everywhere. And we have a lot of farm workers here, they're about to come back. A lot of them are going to come back from Arizona in a couple of weeks. Um, we have, as our superintendent mentioned, fourteen hundred educators here in the community. Um, so I, I don't know, I just would like to see if there's anything, other board members might have any ideas on what we can do further beyond just sort of complaining here at our board meetings, because I don't think the governor's watching. And so that's what I have on that.
Supervisor, this has been Mallow, um, uh, with public health. I, I, I just want to mention that we are in negotiations with OptumServe. And, um, you know, as you know, they're a federally, um, contracted healthcare provider that work with the military, and, uh, they, they, they are working in our community with a testing site. And we are, um, we are actually making plans for them to deploy here in San Benito County, uh, on March 20th. And they initially will get their own, um, uh, excuse me, we will allocate their first doses as a soft opening, and then, um, the next, the following week, uh, they will be getting their own allocation. And, um, their soft opening, the plans for the soft opening, uh, will be one hundred doses per day. And then we're going to advance them to two hundred and ten doses a day. Um, and they have the capacity to go up to, I want to say, oh, four- Um, and they have the capacity to go up to, I want to say, oh, four hundred doses a day. Uh, so by the end of the month, we're hoping that, um, OptumServe is in place and that we are, they're getting their allocation and that we are vaccinating a lot more folks.
What can we do to assist you?
Uh, well, at this point, uh, you know, we're, we're moving along. Um, they have to, you know, they have to work out the details with staffing. Um, we're, we're trying to get a, um, a contract in place for a location. Um, so, um, you, you guys are helping us all you can. Ray is helping us, Tracy is helping us. We're, we're just moving as fast as we can on this.
I think one suggestion would be just soliciting the MyTurn app because in order to, um, push that up to all your connections, because in order to get in through OptumServe, as women indicated, um, you have to, you have to go on MyTurn and register through MyTurn and that's how you'll schedule your appointment. And so, um, you know, it, we feel like we have some hope on the horizon. If they do two-ten a day for, and how we have a three-day standard clinic a week, you know, that's advancing a little bit quicker. And so I would just say helping us message the MyTurn app and encouraging people that it's a good thing and supporting that transition would be really helpful. Um, and I know that we are exploring doing a door hanger as well, I think with PIO Westrick, um, to get that information out, um, in, in three different avenues. So it's a lot of work, but we really do want to push that. So that would, that's, we really need that support.
I was just gonna, uh, excuse me, Mr. Chair, I was gonna comment that I totally agree with Supervisor Cosmicke. Um, you know, we need to keep beating the drum. Uh, I'm wondering if, I know last week, uh, a couple of us were in on a call from Sacramento's, uh, the governor's office, a few individuals, a couple of individuals, I don't recall their names, that were talking to all counties. Uh, possibly a letter, um, to them, uh, that specifies, you know, exactly how we compare with other counties. Uh, we certainly can look at that. And you know, if we look at the, the number of vaccines that we're talking about, if it weren't for the fact that so many people are going out of county to get vaccines, our numbers would be, you know, much, much lower. You know, there's many, many people have gotten vaccines in places like Santa Clara County, Santa Cruz County. Uh, and we've been encouraging people to do that, but if it weren't for that, we would be in much worse shape. Uh, there's a little bit of a concern. I was, uh, at the CSAC meeting, which again is all the counties, uh, in the state. There was, uh, there's recognition about discrepancy between rural counties and urban counties as Supervisor Hernandez brought up. But there was some discussion about them looking at possibly putting, doing some geofencing a few weeks down the road so that, um, if you couldn't go outside your county, which would, which in our case would make things much worse, frankly. Um, I don't know if that's going to happen, but, uh, anyway, I totally agree with Supervisor Cosmicke. Uh, maybe another letter, maybe it doesn't go to the governor, maybe it goes to, uh, the group that is working with the governor. I, I'm not sure, but I, I think it's worth a try with very specific numbers because they are just incredibly unfair.
These letters, you know, I agree. I handed, handheld one up there. I tried to call, uh, supervisor, or Assemblymember Rivas and Senator Caballero. That's who we need to talk to. They talk to, they're up there. They're in their face. So what can we do to have Senator and, uh, our Assemblymember speak on our behalf? Because it's not happening. I mean, they have more power than we do. They are sitting close to the governor. So that's what we need to do. We need to figure out how we can contact them to bring them in here and, and, and hold them accountable.
I agree with you. I spoke to, uh, Robert, actually I, I, I ran into him, uh, at Nob Hill the other evening and, uh, we had quite a long conversation and I've had many conversations with him. He, he's well aware of our situation, but maybe you're right, Supervisor Medina, we need to maybe put in something in writing.
Yeah, they're, they're aware of it, Bob. I, don't get me wrong. I'm not saying, I'm not trying to, but they need, we need results. We're at a point now where we need results. We can't just send these letters up to the governor and with all due respect, you know, the governor looks at it or he doesn't look at it. And we need Anna and Robert to walk in there and say, hey, listen, we're, we're, um, we're at the bottom of the list. And I represent these, uh, counties and Robert and Anna, you know, call us. So that's, and I'll call you guys and you know that. So let's, let's work together on this one, please.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, may I suggest that we, um, well, for one thing, if we send a letter out, I think it should go to all these entities. I think it makes sense to send it to Assemblyman or State Senator or Governor's Office, CDPH and Blue Shield. Um, on top of that, I wonder, you know, and maybe this is just the communications PR side of me thinking, do we want to consider a resolution of some kind, a, a vaccination fairness resolution? And maybe we could start some sort of a wave across, potentially across the region. If we could maybe get Monterey to do something similar hopefully and, um, open the eyes potentially to, uh, just the, the broad spectrum of the inequality that's happening with the vaccine distribution. I know it's just another document, but, um, you know, a vaccination equality, a vaccination fairness, something, you know, we can work on the terminology that, that really underscores this. And then, um, secondly, I just want to, um, uh, maybe Tracy can answer after. I don't know if you guys have, if, I'm sorry, if the fellow supervisors have thoughts on that. Um, but I also do want to clarify before we're done, something about MyTurn, whether people can we talk, okay, go ahead.
I would, I would definitely try to, um, build a relationship with the Louis, with Supervisor Luis Alejo. He is, uh, he's sent a lot of letters out there and he's pretty, uh, skillful in the talking out there.
Well, he's also former Assemblymember Alejo, so he has the, the knowledge and the work, the background. And, and Monterey County is very, very progressive in their, their stance. They even did a, um, public records request from, to the state, to the state. So they want to know, you know, they, they're demanding to know where are these numbers and why aren't the vaccine information being transparent? So we're having really good conversation. Thank you. This is what I've been kind of craving for, the, the lack of information. How I keep complaining that I'm in the dark, but this is, this is shedding a lot of light on where I'm coming from. So thank you. Thank you. I, I appreciate it. I appreciate it. And I very much support the resolution aspect. And as soon as possible, whatever we need to do to, to get that, um, and make sure Blue Shield, um, hears it and then CC and all of the, the public officials that need to have that because we, we are in such a terrible state and, and, um, yeah, just, thank you. I support it.
I know you wanted to bring something else.
Oh, yeah, just really quickly to clarify, um, with Ms. Belton, I, we talked in the ad hoc meeting about this. You mentioned MyTurn. Can, just to clarify the pub, for the public, can they go on today, right now and register? And, and we're good to go? Or do they have to wait until Friday, um, when we officially turn on?
They can go on right now. Um, however, they, they won't see appointments. They will be able to register on MyTurn and they should get a confirmation of their, um, their registration, either by text or email, however they choose the message of communication. Once the portal stands up in our county with appointments, then they get a next pinged again, however they choose, whether it be text message or email or a phone call to schedule an appointment. And so then the appointments become available.
I appreciate that. And then my last comment, um, that I brought up quite a bit about a mailer. I think it, we're, we're at that point now, so let's make sure we have a mailer. I know this is ad hoc, but in case we don't meet before Friday, let's have a mailer ready to go. Personally, I prefer a, a form letter that looks serious, like a bill, more so than a marketing flyer. Um, some, something that, you know, jumps out with our logo on it and explains to people that this is where we're at. We are moving to MyTurn. You need to get on there. Um, and, and I think that would also help just get our MyTurn numbers up if, if Ms. Belton is saying that that could play into getting more doses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Tracy. Any other discussion?
I was just gonna say if they could put the PowerPoint back up, it wasn't, we won't finish with the PowerPoint yet. If there's no more questions for us, I think the next slide is enforcement, I think. Yep. So, um, um, I, we're done unless you have any other questions for public health staff. Uh, we're going to turn this over to admin and research management. And we also do have city code enforcement on to update the board on city code enforcement as well. Mike Shambless, are you on? And I didn't know if Ray wanted to introduce this or if you.
Tracy, this is Benny. I'm in the chambers. Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Tracy, Mr. Espinoza. Mike Shambless is indisposed at the moment. And, uh, but he sent an excellent report that I think is included in your packet. And he also sent me something he'd like for me to convey to the board this morning with regard to COVID enforcement actions. And if you, with your indulgence, I will just read what he wrote. Hope that's okay. Good morning, Supervisors. I'm pleased to report that to date we have visited forty-four separate businesses in the unincorporated county. Last week, we assisted the administrative, administration office with a review of grant applicants to ensure that they are also in compliance. We accomplished that task and will be visiting some of those businesses in the future to ensure compliance. To date, we have issued three citations for violations that are still working their way through the due process. Staff continues to complete regular follow-up and to respond to special assignments as required. And our staff is varying their hours and days of work because with the improved weather and the longer days, we have noticed an increase in activity during non-traditional business hours. So, Mr. Chair, members of the board, uh, that's our report. And Edgar was good enough to bring the slide up that summarizes the business contacts that have been made. And there's also an accompanying map that shows it's pretty well dispersed all over the county. And I thank you for the opportunity and we'll try to answer questions if we have to.
Is there any questions from the board?
I'd just make a comment. Um, um, I think, you know, it's, we, we just heard, uh, which is great news that we're moving into, potentially moving in red tier. I know we have to remain there with our numbers, I believe, for two weeks. But the comment that I would make is that, uh, I am concerned that, you know, with better weather and as the numbers, our numbers are coming down, which is great. The last thing we need to see are people not wearing masks, um, and, you know, congregating in, in larger groups, um, uh, not following the guidelines, uh, whether they be purple tier guidelines or red tier guidelines. We certainly don't want to go backwards. And so I would just encourage, you know, enforcement to remain vigilant and anyone out there listening that just stay safe, continue to stay safe until we, you know, if you look at the numbers, we are, we've made a lot of progress, but we still have, uh, sixteen percent of our Samnio County population that has been vaccinated. That means there are eighty-four percent of the population, uh, that has not been vaccinated, vaccinated yet. And so we, we need to be vigilant. Those would be my comments. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I make a brief comment in, in response to what the supervisor just indicated?
Yes, sir.
All I wanted to say is I, we hear you and, and appreciate the comment. But the, on the flip side, I would just want the board to realize that we've been very favorably impressed with how much voluntary compliance there is on the part of our community. It's really kind of the flip side of what has been a very dark period for all of us for the last year. And I just think you ought to know that the citizens of San Benito, generally speaking, are very responsible. And, uh, we're so pleased to report that to you.
Well, that's great to hear. And, and I think that goes because we're out there educating. And that's what the intent always was. It was to educate everyone not to go out there and try to make money off this. I don't think anyone, I, me for one, I can speak probably for every board member. We don't want to make money off these citations. We want to educate and then move forward. I think that's where we're all at. Were there any questions from the board?
We also have a, a city representative.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Here as well, uh, concerning code enforcement. Desrey?
Desrey, are you on?
Hello, good morning. City Hall's Code Enforcement Officer Martinez. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. First, I just wanted to start off with since the ordinance took in effect, um, code enforcement has been doing routine compliance checks throughout the city and including on the weekends. Uh, we've addressed so far twenty-nine businesses. Um, I have issued a total of three citations for a thousand dollars with businesses that were found operating indoors. Um, we did do an education first, um, so they were aware. Um, there's been a total of eleven face covering citations that have been issued to residents and/or business owners. However, that has, um, been doing really good. We've been getting a lot of progress and our recent citation hasn't been given in since February fourth. So it's getting a lot better. Um, I am getting a lot of positive feedback from the residents and the business owners, um, that they do appreciate the educating process. Um, there's been a couple of businesses that actually have sat down with me on their business plans to prevent people from piling up outside during the weekends. Um, during this compliance checks, I haven't had any problems with businesses allowing me to enter. And, um, I just want to let you guys know that it is getting a lot better out there. I have noticed, um, people are wearing their masks. The weekends, we have gotten better this past weekend, um, these last two weekends actually. Poor decisions, um, I don't mean to call anyone out, but they have done great. Um, the downtown businesses have been doing great. And as far as, um, the complaints that have been coming in, they've just been getting addressed. And we haven't, if they have been told, they're not really getting educated anymore. Um, they've been educated already. We're pretty much just issuing citations. So I hope that covers everything. Do you guys have any questions?
No, ma'am. Any questions from any board members? Thank you very much for your time.
You're so welcome. Have a good day.
And thank you for what you're doing. I know it can't be easy. Um, I just, I just know what you're doing. I thank you very much. I would, I would not want to be in your shoes. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So next on our, um, agenda within the COVID item is just a, a brief, um, a business grant update. And we have Dulce Alonso, our management analyst, who will report out to your board.
Good afternoon, or good morning, board. Um, from our business applications, we, we did get a hundred and forty-three applications. Um, it looks like there was some that were submitted on time that went to our junk folder that were, that were missed. But, um, we're following up with, with those on any missing documents. And, um, we are looking to have final determination, um, hopefully by the end of this week. Um, we're still aggressively targeting getting money to businesses the end of this month, early, um, April. So, um, yeah, there's a lot of moving parts and I want to thank all our staff involved in, um, evaluation and the two supervisors. Thank you. I think any questions?
Anything from the ad hoc? They want to add to that? Thank you. Um, yeah, I just again want to thank our staff. Um, this is a lot of work they're putting in and it's very appreciated. And I want to thank our review committee that is, is involved with their voluntary efforts in helping us out to, um, narrow down this list. And, um, and just want to emphasize again that the point of these grants was to really, um, really target helping out the businesses that were, you know, directly impacted by the recent stay-at-home order and the current restrictions. So a hundred and forty-three applicants, I think some of those were certain businesses that put in multiple applications. Um, so we probably had roughly, correct me if I'm wrong, a hundred and thirty to thirty-five businesses. And it's looking like there probably will be about half of those, uh, maybe a little more than half of those that will, um, get grants, which is right in line with what we were, um, budgeting and what we were expecting. So I think it's a really, it's going to be a great program. Thank you.
Yeah, I will just, uh, um, repeat what Supervisor Cosmicke said in terms of, uh, really appreciate the job that staff has, county staff has been doing on this, um, business grant program. Uh, in fact, the, the entire county, it's, it's amazing the job that, uh, everyone's been doing during this COVID crisis. Um, you know, Tracy and Lynn and her group, um, you know, they're working incredible hours, um, spending all day Sunday, uh, from the wee hours in the morning. Um, and then we, uh, it's amazing code enforcement. And you know, it, it's making a huge difference. Um, I don't think it should be lost on anyone that, uh, our numbers. When we first started here with this new board, we were, I think, the twelfth worst in the state of fifty-eight counties in terms of where we fell. And now we are getting close to moving into the red tier and we're right in line with, with most other counties. So we have made tremendous progress. But, uh, anyway, thank you Dulce. Um, uh, great job. But anyway, thank you Dulce, great job. Also, once we do make the determination, I would like to have us consider taking a look at possibly looking at some nonprofits, depending on where we fall as far as money is available. I know that was always our intent to go back and take a look at that as well, so just a reminder to staff that it's something we should take a look at. Thank you.
That's it for that. We do have one more item. We wanted to provide an update on the, on the Great Plates.
Okay.
So we'll go ahead and get started with that. Michelle is on the line. She is Executive Director at the Chamber and she's been assisting the county and doing a great job. So Michelle.
Hey there.
Hi, Michelle.
Hi, everybody. I just want to give a quick update on Great Plates. So currently, we are serving five hundred and twenty-seven seniors. Cumulatively, from the start of the program, we've served forty-nine thousand nine hundred meals. That's about seventy-five hundred meals weekly. Four hundred and thirty-four of the current participants are sixty-five and up and ninety-five are classified as either a positive or high risk of COVID and they're also between the ages of sixty and sixty-four. Right now, we're currently working with twelve restaurants and this program is employing one hundred and two local employees that are supporting this program. And fifty percent of the businesses are minority owned. Do you guys have any questions specifically about the program? That's our current update. We send that to the state every week. Currently at the Chamber, we have three staff people that are working on it. We receive phone calls daily, emails daily, we work with the restaurants, we work with the participants and we work with the county to do auditing and review of all invoices and compare them against participant lists to ensure accurate invoicing and pricing.
Thank you, Michelle, and I'm going to continue on with this as a part B of this. We've, up to date, we've spent about one point four million so far. It's approximately about five hundred thousand dollars a month to continue to run the program. With that, we've actually reached out and to FEMA to get reimbursed. Obviously, there's uncertainty on timing with FEMA. It could take months, potentially years to be reimbursed. So with that being said, we've been kind of eating away at our general fund. I mentioned that I'd come back to you with a recommendation if we would want to continue the program. We'd love to continue the program. I think it's been extremely vital for some of our businesses within our community as well, as well as the elderly. So I think my understanding, even hearing from Michelle, that there were a few businesses that were going to go under. But when that program kicked in, they kept their doors open. So I think it's a, it was a great program. I think it's helped many areas within our community, up in the Aromas area. We were able to kick that off with the Aromas Bar and Grill, even down to the Raspino's area. So it's been, it's been a great program. Tried to hit as many areas as we can. But unfortunately, we've, staff has met and really looked at this. What we're going to suggest is to move forward with is a smoothing out of the program for this month. We'll, we'll do two more weeks. We're going to reduce it from seven days to five days. So we'll have five days a week for the next two weeks. And then what will have happened is on the, so basically March twenty-second, twenty-fourth and twenty-sixth will be a week that will carry three days for that week and that'll end the program. Again, there's complexities with our auditing, looking at how we, how we carry this and this potentially could have a negative impact on our budget or basically on potential outreach for CLPs and other things, so. So that's, that's what we wanted to share with you, I think, in light of us moving to the other tiers as well and opening up. I think it's also kind of a proper timing for that to occur as well. So just wanted to share that with your board. And I also want to just really emphasize, this is a big, big forklift. It's a lot of work. And I know the Chamber has been doing a great job, really scrutinizing and being on top of the restaurants, make sure that they provide good meals. I know that that's been at times an issue. And so I know that she's been doing a great job and also facilitating the program as well. So just wanted to thank her and her team for that and really stepping up to the plate to do that because it is a lot of work. As well as staff internally as well to facilitate things, paying the bills and other things. So it's been a tremendous amount of work, so. With that, I just wanted to turn it back to the chair if you had any questions.
The board have any questions?
No questions, just want to thank Michelle and her team for doing a fabulous job. Anyway, it's been a great program. Thank you.
Supervisor Gonzalez?
I also want to say thank you. Yesterday, I was in a meeting for the CSAC and the OES and a couple of the counties made the comment too, just the information coming from the state, they, they actually, the state authorized it to go through April the seventh. But the information forthcoming, it's not in a timely manner. They're experiencing the same situation that we are, where they're depleting the, the general fund to continue the program and so there was, there was a sense there that not a lot of counties were going to continue it the way, the way we were deciding to phase it out and so. I thank you for everything that you and your staff are doing. I know you're doing a wonderful job, very responsive to phone calls and concerns and just, just thank you. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Cosmic?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I also want to thank the Chamber and Michelle's team and really this whole effort is, to me, is a model of, of how you do a public-private nonprofit collaboration. It's really, you know, I'm just really proud of our community and I'm proud of our staff and, and the Chamber really hit it out of the park, I have to say. So I'm really just very thankful for their participation and, and their leadership. And, and I also just want to really encourage our residents to get out and support our local restaurants going forward, especially when we go into this red tier and they're going to have more of an ability to serve more people indoors, I believe, if I'm not mistaken.
Twenty-five percent.
So let's, let's really all just make an effort to think about our restaurants and get out there and support them. Thank you.
Supervisor Hernandez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I've, I've worked with the Chamber and actually sit on their tourism committee and I've seen them at work firsthand, so I can attest to what Supervisor Cosmic and Tiffany and Gonzalez had mentioned, that they're, they're, they're very much an excellent organization that does a lot of due diligence in making sure that they are successful. They want to hit it out of the park and they want, they want even metrics to show you that, that they can get things done. So I, I knew that they would do a good job and I'm, I'm glad ultimately that the community received the benefit of all that hard work. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? We'll go to public comment. Is there any public comment?
Please press star nine or the raise your hand icon on your screen. Elias Salinas, you've been unmuted. You have three minutes.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, gosh, so much to report. First of all, I would like to say to Supervisor Hernandez that I, I think you were trying to state that a private entity is better at organizing than a government agency with regards to this, specifically on the vaccinations. And you are part of the government and I would appreciate it and so are your constituents to actually give more credit and, and back and, and support that the public health, the public department, the public health department. So you said anybody over the sixteen, over the age of sixteen, that is true. However, the people that were vaccinated by the San Benito Health Foundation were healthy people. And thank you Supervisor Cosmic, that it was. It was, and it's well-known that it was the San Juan Batista Rotary Club members and that were, that jumped and skipped the line. And this, what has happened is that when I was a little girl, I remember watching this movie of the person that they never got caught because they made a deal with the devil. And that's exactly how I find the CEO of the San Benito Health Foundation. She's unscathed on this. She, she stated just yesterday, allegations have not been verified. We know what she did. It's on the record. It's public information. There's, there's, and, and to this day, for her to continue to deny that they've done nothing wrong is absolutely ludicrous. It, it, it just astounds me that the Board of Supervisors have decided that you're going to allow her with zero tolerance to continue for them to go ahead and give out vaccinations. She's not to be trusted. We already know what she's done. This is not the first time that this, the CEO has done something. That the person is, this individual person has, has a track record of, of going rogue and just doing things on their own. And again, she's unscathed. I would like to know, and this is for Crystal Lamont, who's going to be supervising the priority of the schools? I know that they're going to be doing the priority list of who's going to be vaccinating. So I'm not to say, I'm not saying that I can't trust them, but President has been said by the San Benito Health Foundation that people have been known to skip the line. And, and going back to the foundation is the only person that has come forward is Supervisor B Gonzalez to say that she got vaccinated. Not one other person, and there are prominent people in our community that got
Thank you.
vaccination.
Thank you.
Just left now. You've been unmuted. You have three minutes.
Hello?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can. Thank you.
Hi, um, okay, I actually tuned in for your part thing, but listening to the end of the meals, I'm I think the Great Place was a great program, but I'm curious about comparing that Great Plates at twenty-two dollars a plate to your Meals on Wheels, which is what, two fifty a plate? Or something around, it's, it's fairly inexpensive. And it just seems such a contrast that I wanted to point that out, maybe Meals on Wheels should expand and, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Loretta, you've been unmuted. You have three minutes.
Good morning. I hope everybody's doing well. I wanted to make a comment. Number one, I noticed Supervisor Hernandez that you did not stand during the Pledge of Allegiance and I was wondering why. Number one, as a wife of a military veteran, I did take a little offense of that and I was just wondering if you're protesting something. I thought you were a patriot. Number two, I do not support, of course, having the San Benito County Health Foundation be given vaccinations. However, if that's your decision, I'd like to know who's going to be the guard dog over that? Who's going to be watching to make sure that this person who we know we can't trust and, and you, you guys said it best, who's going to, who's going to make sure that she's not going to go rogue again? Number two. And Mr. Hernandez, for you to defend them is really ludicrous because she vaccinated out of tier, it's a proven fact, no matter how much she's trying to gaslight you guys. These are healthy individuals. She did not do what was done this weekend. This weekend, they had a list prepared of already people that were in the same tier. Rose Vivian did not do that. These were people that were called way in advance. These were not orphaned vaccines. That was a proven fact. So for you to come on board and read something from the state guidelines that didn't even apply to her is actually very ignorant in my eyes. It shows me that you're not even comprehending correctly the guidelines from the state or you've not read the report or something because it doesn't correlate. And I'm extremely disappointed in your morals. I think you go to church, you're a God-fearing man because what you just said today is not of a moral man. What she did was very immoral and very unethical and I'm very disappointed that you're sitting there supporting that. And Ms. Gonzalez, you too. Tone, I read some of those letters. Her tone were very offensive, very defiant as a matter of fact. She signed a contract that had to give over this information and she was defiant in that. And I believe we had to fight tooth and nail to get that information from her. Shame on her. And to this day, she's still gaslighting everybody, trying to say that, oh no, I didn't do anything wrong, which she did and facts matter. And in this case, it was very satisfying to be proven correct on those allegations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
No further comments.
Bring it back to the board here? Any comments from the board?
Mr. Chair, just one comment. It occurred to me that we were going back to our conversation about what more we could do to get the attention of Sacramento. I'd like to ask staff to take a look at what it would take to bring on a lobbyist, maybe sooner rather than later. Maybe if we find the right person, maybe a lobbyist in Sacramento might help us in addition to the other things that we already discussed. So that's just something I'd like to, for us to take a look at. Here's possibly for the next meeting to consider. I don't know if that may be too soon, but thank you.
Is it too soon?
We, we can work on that. We'll work on it over the next two weeks. And if we, and if we can't get, you know, enough information, we'll, we'll schedule for the following meeting.
We've used lobbyists in the past and have not been successful. I mean, you know, once again, we have two elected officials that are next to the governor.
No, I agree.
That's, that, I mean, a lobbyist, I mean, a lobbyist, you can't get closer to the governor than Mr., you know, when you look at Ana Caviero and Robert Rivas, they're right next to him. I mean, what, what we're saying is we're paying elected officials dollars and now we want to pay a lobbyist to go talk to Ana and Robert. I just, we will put it on the agenda, but I will be the first to say I'm not, I'm, a lobbyist to me at this point in time with monies that needs to, need to go to other things. I, I could not support it and I'll just, you know, mention that because I did sit on the lobbyist that we did about three years ago, was it? Yeah, about three years ago, three, four years ago. And it's, it's just not for us. It, it wasn't, wasn't, there was no return whatsoever. I think looking at things like investing in our, what you are completely on board is our EDC and things like that, that's what we really need to focus on. But if, if, if it's not too late, we would like to, I'd like to put it on this agenda coming up
Yeah, we'll, we'll
on the twenty-third.
We'll do our best to get it on. Yeah, and, and, you know, certainly saying we can discuss and you have some experience, but just because you mentioned the EDC, we didn't, we've had some in past years, not, not success with the right EDC director, but I think now we are. So I mean, just because we haven't had success with a lobbyist in the past doesn't mean that we might not in the future. And it's not just for this issue, but for other issues going forward. I know many counties have success. I agree with you. At this time, we've got to be careful of our expenses, but, but I think it's something to take a look at. In addition to, I totally agree with you, continuing to, most importantly, lobby with our elected officials. I would agree that that's our first priority. We might also work with Monterey County possibly, I, I assume they have a lobbyist, they have connections as well. Maybe if we work jointly with them.
I like that.
That would be, that would be an area that maybe we can work together on that in the short term.
Well, we can bring this up to the conversation next.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Real quick thought, Mr. Chair. I, I just wanted to wrap up on the Health Foundation. Just again, just say that there is, they, they made mistakes and, you know, but I think for, for me, and I, we've had these discussions on the ad hoc is that, you know, there's politics, there's disagreements, you know, a lot of us disagree at a certain point. There's a lot of anger in some parts of the community about what occurred. But in the end, our responsibility is to serve our residents and to, and I'm very, I would just be very concerned about, you know, that we're, this is going to be a while. We're going to be doing vaccine allocations into, at least into the fall, maybe into next year. And we have put them on hold for a month and a half or so now. You know, I, I don't want to per se punish them forever, but at the same time, for me, I just want to make um, but at the same time, for me, I just want to make sure that we are doing our best to make sure that our most vulnerable residents are, um, inoculated. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Hernandez, any, uh, parting comments?
Uh, I always honor the flag, Mr. Chair, and I just wanted to make that clear. Those are my only comments. Thank you.
Supervisor Gonzalez. I was gonna say Ramirez. I'm sorry.
My, my damn hyphenated name gets me in trouble. Yeah, Gonzalez. Um, no, no, I'm okay. Um, thank you.
Okay, we will, uh, be adjourning for lunch right now, and at lunch, we will be doing a closed session. Do you want to, uh, talk about the closed session legal counsel, please?
Yes, 27. Closed Session Conference Legal Counsel. Existing litigation, uh, number of cases, one subdivision A and D, one of sub, of section 54956.9. Name of cases, Rose versus County San Benito, uh, uh, Court of Appeal, six appellate district, case number H048681.
Is there any questions from the board members? Any, uh, public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment, please press star nine or the raise your hand icon on your screen. No comments.
Seeing none, we'll adjourn for lunch and return here at, uh, 1 o'clock. Exactly. 1:01. Thank you.
That's good.
We will start off with number twenty-three, county administrator, from the county administration office. This is a informational presentation outlining the plans for the development of regional park and related facilities. This was actually asked to be put on the agenda by Supervisor Hernandez.
Yeah, we do, we do need a report on closed session.
Oh, sorry, thank you, Bob. Report out on a closed session, thank you.
The board did a vote to pursue the appeal of the case. It's going to be at the Court of Appeal, Sixth Appellate Case District, case number H-048681, by a vote of five to zero in favor of the appeal.
Now, we'll go to twenty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and open up briefly on this one. As you're all aware, we've had a regional park, River Parkway plan for some time, almost a decade now. There's been some work done from the county. And we have, I know we had an ad hoc last few years working on this. And we've applied for grants, we've been working through the process. Obviously, there's been some, some things that we've had to address. Adding a River Parkway road, addressing a few other infrastructure needs in order to move forward with the River Parkway, the master plan. And there's some, some milestones that we need to reach really soon here. And I've asked Benny Young, our RMA director, to provide a brief presentation for your board and something that we're going to be taking to the city very soon, but we wanted to give you a preview of it prior. So with that, we've actually had the ad hoc part, ad hoc work on this as well. And I want to thank everybody for their time and diligent, diligent effort and work on this. But I'll go ahead and pass it to Benny and he'll elaborate further on this. Benny?
Thank you, Mr. Espinoza, Mr. Chair, members of the board. It's my pleasure to talk to you about this today. I think this is a wonderful project that you have started. I wish I could take credit for it, but as you know, I'm only here four months so far. And there's been a lot of work done on this and I'm very impressed with the progress that's been made. And we'll talk a little bit about that, but this could be a wonderful amenity for the Hollister City and the San Benito region. And what, the reason we're here today is we just want to give you an informational update. There's some actions that will come back to your board in the relatively near term. One has to do with a possible vacation along Nash Road that I'll talk to you about that ties into the overall San Benito County Regional Park and River Parkway plan. And I'll explain that and that will come back to your board for a decision. There's a public hearing that we're scheduling for March the twenty-third on that. And eventually, we will bring a grant application back to you for your authorization. There's a special program, grant category that applies, that only counties can apply for. And we're preparing to apply for that with your concurrence. And it would generate as much as three million dollars for the county if we're successful. In addition to that, we have some impact fees that could be applied toward the project as well. And this could be a great, well, it's, it's a great idea that could become, start to become a reality in the fairly near future. So with your permission, I'll walk through a PowerPoint that was prepared by Mike Shambless.
Receive.
And Joel Ellenwood, who's here with us. And so if you like it, they get the credit. If you don't, Benny can try to explain things. So as Mr. Espinoza mentioned, you've been planning this for years. There was a general park plan developed in 2010. And then in 2012, there was a focus area for a regional park along the San Benito River that goes all the way from Betabell to Trespinos. And that, that planning process began for the River Park element in 2012. There was quite a lot of public involvement in that. And then more importantly, in 2016, as a result of that planning process, the city, San Benito, and the high school district entered into an intergovernmental agreement to cooperate and define roles and responsibilities with regard to a transfer of property that makes the regional park possible. The county's obligation under that 2016 agreement was to build River Parkway. And that was completed in 2018. And I'll show you a map in a second that depicts that from the air so you can see where it connects. One point nine million dollars. And that was part, part of the exchange of considerations, including the vacation of Nash Street so that the high school would feel comfortable providing land south of River Parkway to the county for the project. We have become, begun the vacation proceedings on that and we'll be back to your board on March twenty-third. One of the reasons we wanted to talk to the city next week and Mr. Espinoza sent a, a letter to the, the city manager asking that we'd be permitted to make a similar presentation next week. It's in the overall interest of the region for the city and the county to work very closely together on that, on this, and you'll see why. First of all, the location is partly in the city, partly in the county. First of all, the location is partly in the city, partly in the county. And the green area that's on this screen would become, would be, would be transferred to the county by the school district. And the area south, this is River Parkway right here, and that's the high school. And so this area, about forty-seven acres, would be transferred to the county. The particular grant program that we hope to apply for requires a fifty-acre minimum. And the county already has possession of land immediately east of the area in green. That's county property, commonly referred to as Palm Tag.
And just for the, if I may, Mr. Chair, to add to that, that's also another part of the investment that was, that was done by the county in addition to the one point nine for the road. So I just wanted to be very clear with that. And this is that vision of the master park and, and, and actually even going even a little further where that solar park was. I think the original master plan even went a little bit below that green line would be additional property there, which Benny is highlighting. But with that being said, that was part of the original vision and investment that your board or the board prior actually did. Just want to be clear with that.
Thank you. So in total, it would be seventy acres available for the development of a regional park. The design specifics have yet to be determined and would be determined, at least to a pretty substantial conceptual level, through a public input process that we hope to begin this spring. And I'll explain why the timing is important. The grant application is not actually until November, but we need to do the public involvement process. We actually need possession of the land to be able to do that effectively, and that strengthens the, the grant application. So the grant application is a special category of Prop sixty-eight for counties only, regional parks districts, and joint power authorities. That could become important too, if the city and county elect to form a JPA at some point to further the objectives of the larger River Park Plan from fourth down to Union. And we'll show that in just a moment. But the eligible projects are trails, regional sports complexes, interpretive facilities, and other recreation facilities. The timeline for the regional park grant application is, it's imminent. And we're already into the second bullet there, almost, where we need to commence the public outreach with both city and county residents very heavily involved in that. Right now, our key objective is to gain possession of the property so, so that we can begin that public outreach. And I won't step through all the steps, but you can see that by November, we hope to have the grant completed and submitted. We think we have a very strong chance of getting this grant. The big picture, of course, is the River Parkway as defined in the plan that was done in two thousand twelve. Goes all the way from essentially Betabell, but one twenty-nine and one oh-one along the San Benito River, through the city of Hollister and all the way down to the Historical Park. I said Trespinos earlier, but it's actually on down to the Historical Park, which is also a county park asset. The section that we're looking at right now is right in the middle. It is a great place to start with the implementation of this regional trail system, in my opinion. It's commonly referred to as Reach Three on the trail, the plan for the trail system. One of the things that we need to do to supplement the great work that was done in twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteen is do some intersection controls at River Parkway and San Benito. On a call last week with the high school and the city, the mayor indicated a desire to have control at that intersection before the city agrees to relinquish their portion of Nash Street, which we'll come to in a minute. And so the group's agreement seemed to be that we would put, we, the county, would put a three-way stop in at this location where River Parkway comes into San Benito. That would just be an interim improvement, so that the intersection would operate more safely between now and when we're able to do something like this. What we're envisioning for the longer term is a roundabout at that location. Roundabouts work very safely, everybody keeps moving. And I happen to be an advocate for roundabouts in an urban setting like this. And so we are planning to recommend to you as part of the CIP that we bring to you for adoption later on this spring, the inclusion of a project to do a roundabout at that location and then build an urban section or at least a nicely paved section all the way down to Union that includes pedestrian and bicycle facilities, not just for cars. And I think the city concurs with that. I don't want to speak for the city, and I believe that the high school looks forward to having the ultimate operational control in the form of a roundabout. In the interim, we would plan to develop some parking for park use on county-owned property, on the Palm Tag property roughly where the star is, on the south side of River Parkway. And one of the reasons for doing it there is we don't want, in the, in the interim at least, until we are able to implement the project over time, to be encouraging people to walk across River Parkway. We would rather have them be able to park on the south side and directly access the trail system, which would, is already in place, the informal trail system down in this area along the San Benito River. In the longer term, we might even consider another phase of this if, if the city is interested. The city has a great plan for developing Brigantino Park on the north end, just south of Fourth Avenue, or Fourth Street, rather. That's Fourth Street, that's Brigantino Park. These are the city's wastewater ponds. The city just opened up a marvelous new trail along the yellow line, as I'm showing you, down to Apricot Park. I snuck through the fence, please don't tell the city, and walked it Sunday afternoon. And I, it's, it's actually a marvelous facility, they've done a wonderful job. And this, the, a logical second grant application might be to have a JPA with the city for a river crossing in that location, so you can get from the new trail over to Brigantino Park. And there's a wonderful trail around Brigantino Park as well. So that bridge in that location could have multiple uses, including as a utility conduit for waste reclaimed between Brigantino and, and the wastewater ponds, as well as for pedestrians and bicyclists. Ray tried to tell me horses too, I'm, I'm struggling with that, but maybe. So there are opportunities to work together here, future sections of River Parkway. But it all begins with the development of that land south of the high school, in my opinion. That's a great place to start. And we could prioritize working together with the city on the trail reach from, all the way from Fourth Street to South Side Road. South Side Road, of course, is beyond Union, that's where this, the county road yard is and, and the new affordable housing project going in just south of the road yard, or north of the road yard. And there are some new developments over there that have room for active park nodes along this River Park. So as part of the public process, we would plan to bring back to you an update of our master plan for the San Benito County Park and have consideration of a possible JP, JPA if the city's interested. We don't want to try to muscle the city into anything here. We're only on this to work together cooperatively for the common good. And it's not our objective to make them uncomfortable. But that's a possible place to work together. So what's coming to you shortly is this block of Nash, under the twenty-sixteen agreement, is envisioned to be vacated by both the city and the county, so that the school district can unite their north and south campuses across Nash. We own, actually, the county, the city owns the north thirty feet of that. And we are, it's a county, we have county road rights on the south thirty feet, even though we don't have the actual title. So we need to vacate what title we have there to enable the street closure to take place. And I think maybe that's what I wanted to share with you. There are some actions that will come to you soon, including maybe even an agreement that's still being negotiated with the high school, a supplemental agreement, for lack of a better term, to the twenty-sixteen, between the high school and the county and the city. That's still under discussion. I'll be happy to stop and ask Joel if he has anything you think we need to add.
No, thank you. This is simply an opportunity to begin a long-deferred dream of creating a regional park at this location. It does require cooperation between the high school district, the city and the county, and that's not always easy. But we're trying to work through the, the concerns involved there. We're both available to answer any questions you may have. And again, at the next meeting, we have the, we're publishing in the newspaper this week and next week, as required by law, the public hearing for the street vacation. The Nash Road, a section of Nash Road on the south side has, has, has been posted with the notice of the public hearing also, as required by law. So you may be hearing from constituents who see that sign or read it in the newspaper, that that's what it's about. And we'd be happy to respond to any questions or concerns.
Mr. Chair, if I may, can we defer to the two ad hoc members to provide some input as well before we open that? Supervisor Hernandez and Supervisor Cosmicki, Cosmicki?
Supervisor Hernandez, do you want to go first?
I'll let you go first, Supervisor Cosmicki.
First off, I just want to let Benny know, I'm going to initiate a citizen's arrest for your trespassing of the park over there. Just to put this into context, you know, I'm a new supervisor, but my understanding of this is that this has been at a standstill for quite a while. And so the point where we're at now, being able to go to the city council, having some level of agreement from the city representatives, the mayor in particular, and the city manager, is a really big step, potentially a big step forward, you know, and just being able to have that coming up on March fifteenth. That's a, I believe it's the fifteenth, the city council meeting, the next meeting. So if, if residents are in favor of this regional park, which is potentially a very great asset for our community, then I would, then I would encourage you to contact the representatives on the city council, because there, it's going to be a really important vote next week, determining whether this arrangement goes forward as far as us being able to move forward with this grant as soon as possible. And I know some neighbors in that area, Nash Road area, we all know, are, some of them are against this, or have been against the closure of the road and the daytime closure, and then the permanent closure potentially coming up. And I understand that. But I, but I will say, you know, maybe for the last year, they've probably gotten used to having that road open a little bit more. And, and I happen to represent a part of my oddly drawn district, actually, is, part of that is Nash, part of Nash Road over there. And so I've already gotten some feedback and concerns and, but I do want to emphasize to the residents over there that, you know, for one, the county's really committed to improving the circulation on River Parkway, improving the, the safety over there. And, and I, and above all, that, you know, if, if this goes forward and we're able to get this grant and develop this asset, you're going to have a really, really wonderful park right in your neighborhood, which most of us don't have. So I think that, you know, I, hopefully that's not lost on some of the people that might potentially, you know, not be overly excited about this project. So I just want to strongly encourage Hollister City Council members to, you know, also consider the fact that the county is, is, is ready to commit financially and, and build this great park, which would largely be, you know, would largely serve a lot of, basically a lot of city residents. So Hollister residents would get a huge benefit out of this park. And so if Hollister City Council members are out there and you're going to be voting next week, I just would strongly encourage you to keep that in mind. And then, other than that, that's pretty much all I have to say, thank you.
Supervisor Hernandez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Supervisor Cosmicki, that was pretty, pretty well stated. I know you haven't been on this for too long, but yeah, it, to kind of preface it a little bit, I know when I was, when I first got elected, I, I got appointed to this ad hoc. It was originally called the Sports Complex, really, it's, it's just the regional park now. But the, the, when we first started meeting, it was I and Supervisor Dela Cruz, with support of the board, we started getting into the conversations and, and granted, there was, there's a lot of interest from different organizations, from basically the county to the city, the high school, and even including the, the, the parks-focused organizations or like Reach, and then Cheer, which is very much about restoring our riverways. So we were, I've, I've had conversations with both of those organizations actually just recently. And, you know, the, the sentiment is to involve the whole community in this very, very beautiful park. It could be a huge benefit, not just for recreation and for a lot of, you know, obviously good for, for health, but it's also, could be a huge tourism benefit. One of the things that I've had my eye on for a while is, is South County, basically the Hollister Hills and Pinnacles. I know that I've learned a lot through even being part of the chamber, that we have half a million folks that visit that area, but we don't have any, any real benefit from, you know, financial benefit as far as that traffic goes. You know, me and the mayor have conversations we've had before. We joked that Samuel County or Hollister is kind of like Radiator Springs, because it's, you got this, this kind of main thoroughfare that feeds into the Pinnacles and Hollister Hills, but it, it ultimately bypasses, you know, our centers of commerce. So, so it really becomes a focus, I think, because, you know, ultimately, in the last conversations we've had with the lack of funding and, and, you know, we're dealing with, with a lot of issues because of obviously COVID nineteen and the impacts on our businesses, long list of different things financially related. This could be a game changer, I really believe, for our community. It not only would increase property values in that area, you know, and, and I agree with Supervisor Cosmicki, we got to dedicate time and money, so that, that definitely is something that I know we've committed to. We've already spent, like our RMA Director mentioned, about two million dollars. And, and there is, you know, part of the Measure G funds, just to update folks, with the, the, you know, the, the, basically the RMA planning on the, the spending of the Measure G fund on the different districts. My, my district is specifically San Benito Street, so that was one of the conversations, not just, not just enhancing that road, but ultimately adding safety to that road. And I know that was a concern from the city, so we, we, we've been committed to that. It's funny how when ultimately they brought it up, it's something that we were already on board with, so we already knew that that needed to be addressed. So, and I've actually been, spent a lot of time out there. I actually just took a walk on the trail, the, you know, so hopefully I don't get arrested either, but I took a little walk on that same trail, the city's trail. And it is, it's a very beautiful trail, it's, it's actually a really nice area. And I think that would be an amazing asset, because I know that there's that one issue going out on that trail, there isn't any access into the River Park area. It, it pretty much deadened at the, at the bridge on San Juan Road. So there's, there's so much potential for us to really see a benefit for our community. And I know that the high school's focus is Nash Road because of the safety element. Also, they want to avoid any more injuries with, with, you know, kids crossing the street or the, the teachers and the campus supervisors. I know that that was, that already has happened, there's already been accidents, so we want to avoid any teacher issues. So my biggest point, I would say, board is this, this is a win-win. It's a win for the safety, for the high school, for continuity, for the, for the students. It's a win for our community, because we have huge, you know, opportunity for a beautiful park. And it's a win for our business community, for economic development, for tourism, which I, I love to say that tourism is that low-impact dollar, because you have folks that come out, ultimately enjoy their time over here and they leave. And that's what's happening with Hollister Hills and Pinnacles. You know, there could be that element where we have these discussions, especially with the grant fund conversation, to involve the community, to say, well, would you like to see here? I know that there's a lot of organizations, from the baseball organizations to the soccer organizations, that are interested. And I'm, I'm excited to have those conversations, because I believe there's going to be a lot of really good ideas. And last thing I wanted to share is, is my, my conversation I had just late last night was with Herman from Cheer, and he was really excited, and he says that he's a hundred percent supporting the ad hoc and the, and the county board of supervisors. He wants to see that river restored, which is a whole other layer. It's been kind of a, a, not talked about enough issue, which is kind of the, the issue with homeless going out there. And ultimately, there's a lot of garbage and, and it, it really does. It fills our waterways or our river with, with a lot of garbage. And, and I know that there, those folks need a place to stay, so I know that we... folks need a place to stay, so I know that we started the home center, and that's just an opportunity for us to talk about how we could maybe direct folks into that place, and that's a future conversation. But the point is, is I think once you have a lot of, a lot of healthy traffic out there with families enjoying themselves, it's going to put to the top addressing kind of the issue with the homeless, and I think there'll be a lot more oversight because of it, so ultimately, that river will get a lot more attention, and it'll minimize, which I know that's a big concern for Herman, that's what he stressed to me. He said, Peter, when it comes down to all the garbage that gets filled in there, in the river, because of the homeless issue, it feeds into the ocean once these rains come, and that's a huge issue for our environment. So it could be a total win-win with all these different things addressed. Ultimately, we have nothing but, I think, bright days ahead of us if we get this thing to happen. So yes, if you could please lobby the city council, anybody who's interested, and granted, anybody who's concerned about the closure, you can definitely call me, Supervisor Hernandez. I can, my number's 831-537-1062. You can call me with any questions or concerns. I'd rather talk about it now and address any concerns, but I believe it's, like I mentioned, it's a win-win. So hopefully you can support the city council with shutting down of Nash Road. Those are my comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Tiffany?
Well, I would just say that I think it's a fabulous project. It's the kind of thing, there's not enough of this kind of collaboration in our community, and I think that it's wonderful that previous board and, you know, city council and the high school all got together and have been working on this. I think it's a great project. And I do, as Supervisor Hernandez, just commenting, it's an opportunity to really focus in on Samu River and get it cleaned up, and pull, you know, all the communities together from San Juan through into Trespinos. So anyway, great project. Thank you.
Supervisor Pete Gonzalez?
I like the idea of the original project. I commend the county and the city and the high school for pushing this project forward. I hate to be a Debbie Downer, but living on the west side of Hollister, Nash Road is a sore subject with the community, and I am concerned about the permanent closure. I know that that does not affect us and what we're doing, and the item is on the agenda, but that is a major thoroughfare, and since school has not been in session, I am just joyful that we can traverse, but given the one-way for San Benito Street, those of us who live on the west side have difficulty getting back home. We have to veer, curve, turn, and it's a maze of getting across town. And so I know that the River Parkway was supposed to be the answer, the alternative, but it's a pain in the hiney to drive that direction. I force myself to drive it, so I get used to it. I don't like it. So I don't live in that area, that's not in my district, but as a person who was born and raised in this community, we got used to using Nash, that turns Nash, starts at Nash, turns to Trespinos, turns to Sunny Slope. It is a major thoroughfare, and I'm hoping that any kind of public concerns about the permanent closure do not put a nail in the coffin of this project. This project's awesome. It will do wonders for the community, but the permanent closure is a sticky point. It really is, and so we'll see what happens.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board members?
Yeah, I'll just add, just in response to that, I appreciate where you're coming from, but I think the permanent closure is a necessary component of the whole formula. I mean, the permanent closure is necessary to get the land for the regional park, so unfortunately, I understand what you're saying, but at the same time, you know, the high school's going to be open again soon, and it's, the part of the road is closed most of the day anyway. So I don't live there, so I can't, you know...
It's closed from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM when it is in session.
Yeah, so most of the day.
So we know if we have to travel to this side of town, that we have to get there around those hours, and so we've come to get used to that.
Yeah, no, I understand, but just, I want to emphasize that the county's really making efforts to alleviate some of those issues with, you know, the improvements on River Parkway, safety improvements, and then again, to have that really wonderful asset there, I think is a nice benefit for those neighbors. Thank you.
Okay, any other...
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Go ahead.
Yeah, and I would concur with Supervisor Cosmicki that, I, well, and to put it in context, I live in this area, so yeah, I do travel east a lot, you know, on Nash Road. And it was an issue in the beginning, you know, it was something that I had to get used to, but, you know, it's pretty much, it's something that I have acclimated to, and ultimately, you plan your day around it, you know. I know when you're going to the east side, it's because you're going to the grocery store, so, I mean, or maybe you do some shopping or whatever. At the end of the day, I mean, for the most part, the busiest part of the day has already been dealt with, with that closure. It's obviously an inconvenience, it's not a perfect scenario, and I would definitely love to venture into coming up with some other ways to open up a valve for that traffic a little bit more. You know, it's in my district, so it'd be a benefit to my constituents for sure. But all in all, when you look out at the bigger picture, it's nothing but, it's the biggest part of it, I would say 90% of it, is nothing but a benefit to this community. So I fully support this project. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else from the board? About public comment?
Make a comment, please press star nine or the raise your hand icon on your screen. You've been unmuted, please state your full name, and you have three minutes.
Hello? Hi, I'm Anita Kane, and I want to congratulate the board for hearing this wonderful proposal to take our River Parkway to the next step. I'm very encouraged to see this renewed energy. So I would just highly encourage everyone to cooperate, because that's how things get done. We all know that, but it's very difficult to do sometimes, and you guys just stay with it. Don't give up. It's critical to get this great benefit to our community. We've been waiting a long time, and the whole River Parkway is going to be a monument to cooperation. We all know that, between landowners and government agencies, nonprofits like Cheer and Reach and Point Blue, there's so many different entities that are just waiting to be able to participate in this, and the end result is going to be just the best thing for the community. Not only economic benefits and recreational, but the educational benefit of having this cleaned-up riverbed accessible to the high school to use as educational, as field labs, to get kids excited about a science career, to see it in their own backyard, how things work, how the natural world works. Kids these days don't get that chance. So just please, stay with it. Don't give up. Find a way. The community deserves this. It's time. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
You've been unmuted, please press star six to mute yourself. Please state your name. You have three minutes.
Hello?
Yes?
Hi, this is Robin Pollard, and I'm really excited to see that the River Parkway Trail is moving forward, and that the city has taken on that first chunk of a trail, and it really gives the community an opportunity to see what we could have. I know the big dream is from the Pajaro out to Trespinos, and piece by piece, we patchwork it together. So I hope you will work with cooperation with whoever, however we can get this done. It will bring in tourist dollars. People will come and ride their bikes down there. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
You've been unmuted, please state your name, and you have three minutes.
Right.
Eli Ansalinas, thank you. Okay, so one question is, what are the plans for restroom facilities regarding plumbing? Or is it about plumbing facility, or is it going to be porta-potties? Roundabouts. I, my, I'm visualizing students having races among themselves, timing themselves going around roundabouts. I just find that very dangerous. There's already enough traffic, and there's already high volume of speed in that, in that section by the students. And the last time I spoke to first responders, both the fire department and the police department, they weren't even part of the conversation about closing down Nash Road completely because of emergency phone calls. So maybe Mr. Chambliss can go ahead and make a comment based on that? Because if I live on the other side, and I'm just two houses down or an apartment complex down, and it's going to take them three minutes to go around to the bypass, that's three minutes less time of emergency response to get to me. So I think you need to have some more input from the people that live in the neighborhood, because I don't, like I said, first responders were not, were not in favor of closing down, and it was reported by Tenenbaum that the responders were in favor of this, when in fact, they weren't even, they hadn't even been included. They haven't been included in the language. And one other thing with regards to, I never wanted Nash Road to be closed in the first place. These are, these are young adults, and if they can't keep themselves off the street and walk on the sidewalk, well, shame on them, because the first thing as a parent, you teach your kids is you don't play on the street. And that's why Nash closes, closed down, to protect the students. Now, Tenenbaum wants $123 million for a new high school. Why is, why is Tenenbaum willing to, the school willing to donate this property when they're also going to be asking us for $120 million for a new high school? Wouldn't they use that property to add on to the high school, or they're wanting it a whole new location? A new school bond is not going to pass. There needs to be some more thought on this before anybody makes any kind of a decision on this. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you, ma'am.
You've been unmuted, please state your name, and you have three minutes.
Yes, good afternoon, supervisors. This is Valerie Eglin with Reach San Benito Parks Foundation, and we have been waiting on bated breath for this transaction to come to fruition. From 2012, with the first Parks and Rec Commission and the planning involved, it has really been a long haul, and I so applaud the county, the RMA, and all the different engineers who have worked on putting this together. It's amazing, the complexity, and I agree with Bee that this is a monument to cooperation in the area. Talking to Herman Garcia with Cheer, the enthusiasm for the river, with Point Blue, Benny Jensen Benson, on cooperation with the San Benito County Board of Education to create classes and programs for kids to work on repairing and projects along the river, just at the edge of the park. These are wonderful opportunities, and for you all to move it forward and say, yes, we can, is so ingratiating. Thank you so much, and carry on.
Thank you, ma'am.
No more comments.
Bring it back to the board. Any final comments from the board?
So we just have some more work to do, and we'll be coming back to your board with some input once the city hears this item. So thank you for your attention to this, Mr. Chair and Board.
That moves us to number 24, our annual housing element progress report. This is a report only?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Espinoza. We have two annual reports that we need to file around this time of the year, every year. One has to do with progress in the housing program, the annual housing element, and that's the first item, and the second item will be an annual progress report regarding the implementation of the general plan. Both of those reports are due to the state on April 1st, and with your indulgence, we would like to make just a brief presentation on each one of those to kind of summarize some of the key activities that we're involved in on both the housing element and the next item, the general plan. And the first presentation will be handled by, capably by Jamila Saka, who is our housing coordinator for both the city and the county. Jamila?
Yes, good afternoon. I just wanted to check and make sure my audio is, you're able to hear me?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Okay, good. Sometimes when it's been kind of a longer meeting, my audio, I have to kind of go in and out. But yes, again, thank you. My name is Jamila Saka, and I am the housing programs coordinator for both the city of Hollister and San Benito County. And today, like Ms. Jung had presented, I will be discussing our annual housing element report. One of the first things that I do like to discuss is, you know, what is the housing element? The housing element is something that is part of our general plan, it is a portion of it, which we will be discussing a progress report next. The housing element is something that is, provides an analysis, basically, of our community needs, and in terms of different types of the level of needs for housing. It identifies adequate zone sites to be able to meet those needs, and it also is based on some of the regional housing needs goals. And so basically, it is a report that indicates to our county and to this jurisdiction where we plan, and where we set aside and plan to be able to provide housing. It also includes strategies to provide and enable those housing goals as well. One thing that I like to introduce, especially when it is something that's a new term, is this term RENA, or how the state pronounces the regional housing needs allocation. It's a state projected housing need goal, and it's set to accommodate the different categories and different income categories within our, within San Benito County. Next, the housing annual, or the annual housing progress report, like I said, it is an annual report. It is required to submit to both the Housing and Community Development Agency, along with the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. So it is due April 1st, every single year, and it is basically a report of what San Benito County has accomplished in the past year. So this report is targeted for the year 2020. One thing that's really great to highlight that the state has changed in their reporting over the past couple of years, is it really demonstrates the entire process. So one of the first tables is any project applications that the county has received this year, where we have completed and finalled building permits, any annexations or any changes of land. So in past reports, it used to just indicate, you know, what were our final building report numbers, but now you get to see a full report and get to see the progress that San Benito County has made. One thing that I also like to highlight, included in the report, is the goals. As part of the housing element, there are different program goals that we are, that we have created and set for our county, and that's also implemented within the report, as well as one of the last tables. And so a couple of things that I really like to highlight that aren't necessarily shown on the RENA numbers or on the housing numbers, but some future projects specifically include, and which in a past presentation we discussed as well, is the affordable housing that is going to be built off of South Hudson Hospital Road. So in future years, when that's complete, you will see that, which is targeted for very low and low-income households. And so at this time, this is a report that has been submitted and approved first to Planning Commission, and then now will be reviewed for your approval, and then lastly, like I said, it will be submitted to the, this date by April 1st. One thing to really know as well, and the importance of these reports, is a lot of the past grants that we've received in 2019 and in 2020 are really hinged upon providing these progress reports. Some of the ones that we've received, like SB2, our LEAP grants as well, this is one of the requirements, is making sure that as our, that our jurisdiction is submitting this information to the state. And so, like I had said, the Planning Commission has received this last month and has approved it, and then next will be your approval. And at this time, if there are any questions or comments, I'm looking forward to helping explain any more information regarding this report. Thank you.
Board members, any questions? Mr. Chair? Yes?
Yeah, I have more comments. So, is that, is that yours? I don't think it's mine today. No, it's not mine. So yeah, I have more comments. You know, I think the report is very telling with 720 units, I believe, built out of the 800 and, I don't have the exact, 837, that's 86% toward our regional housing needs allocation. And, you know, I know we've recently talked about the pace of growth, housing growth in particular, and I just want to say again, I want to emphasize that, you know, there's overwhelming support in this community for slower and... for slower and smarter housing growth. And, you know, I would estimate somewhere, when I went around and talked to residents, at least eighty percent of the people that shared their view, maybe even larger percentage, were overwhelmingly in support of slower housing growth. And it's been proven time and time again that suburban style, um, single-family housing, uh, is, is really a bad deal financially for the county. And then when you throw in the fact that we simply don't have the infrastructure to support the pace of growth that we've been going on here, I mean, when you look at these numbers that, that, you know, we've been provided today and then you throw in the fact that, um, we have two thousand seven hundred, I sat down with our RMA Director before coming on board here and as of June, we had two thousand seven hundred ninety-one approved new units in the unincorporated county alone, you know? So we talking about eight hundred thirty-seven is our RENA and we have two thousand seven hundred ninety-one approved units right now on the way. Um, and with two thousand, uh, six hundred four issued building permits that are coming. So we're clearly going to just go right past that RENA. We, that's just very clear at this point. And then we have two thousand one hundred sixty-three building permits, um, along with another three thousand or so homes that are already approved in the City of Hollister. This amounts to somewhere around, um, just using a basic formula, twenty thousand plus new residents that are on the way now.
Over how many years?
Over the course of the, those approvals that we have in place.
But how many years would that be, do you think? That's my question.
I don't have, well, we, none of us knows the exact number, but it's, it's not.
Yeah, but when you're saying twenty thousand, you're kind of misleading everybody because they're thinking it's tomorrow. I mean, this might be over, this might be over twenty years. Because San Juan Oaks has been, we've been talking about this for, shoot, I would say eight to ten years. And that's, that's including those numbers. I just want to make sure we're all, you know.
No, there's no exact number because nobody has that exact number.
Yeah, no, exactly, that's what I'm saying. So these are all, these numbers are available, but it's over time, it's not tomorrow.
Yeah, but potentially in the relative near term, over a matter of years.
Yeah, that's one.
Yeah, so yeah, it's not tomorrow, but, and then we have a thousand seven hundred seventy-seven units that are under review, projects like the Lima Project, the Ridge Mark Project, uh, the Intervia and Bill Lee's Project. Um, and, and so what I'm getting at is, we've heard these arguments that, arguing that limiting our housing growth locally will somehow hurt our RENA numbers and our ability to meet state requirements, which are laid out in this housing element report. And the numbers themselves contradict that strongly, that we are easily in place to read our, meet our RENA numbers for the near future and beyond. Um, so there really is no argument for, you know, us not wanting to at least have a smarter approach to growth because what we're doing now is just really, really unsustainable from the, you know, we're sitting here and we're talking about roads and needing money to fix roads, but we all, I think we all know that more residents leads to more people on the roads, which leads to more damage, which leads to more costs down the road. What I'm getting at here, um, well, I also, just to back up, in this report that we have today, um, I was really, really astounded, but I kind of already knew this, that, um, that we basically have zero affordable housing that's been built in this community, essentially none. And I appreciate Jamila's pointing out this project on Hospital Road. We know about, you know, these projects that, that come here and there, but really there have been none built in, in recent years at all.
There's only one right now in Santana Ranch.
So there's one.
That's, that was, it's going to be, what is it, right, twenty percent? Or ten percent? I don't know if that's on my head, but that is affordable housing.
Yeah, but it hasn't been built yet.
But it's being built.
It's coming on the way, yes, I understand that in Santana Ranch and I think it's, uh, I don't know the exact number of units, but yeah, that's coming, I understand. Um, but again, like, let's just look at, let's look at the context here when you, so there's one project there. We, we've built, we're going on building thousands and thousands of homes. So again, that's, it's, it's basically a drop in the bucket. Um, and so our duty, as far as I'm concerned, is, is to, just to control our own destiny, not to allow developers to dictate it, which is what we've done historically over the years. And so, um, I, what I'd like to talk about here is that, you know, we're going to meet our RENA numbers, it's very obvious. Uh, it's very clear to me that San Bernardino County is exempt from SB three thirty's growth cap restriction. And we are essentially building nor, no affordable housing here, aside from the, maybe the project you mentioned there in the Santana Ranch development. And it's finally time that we as county leaders address this discrepancy, stop promoting irresponsible single-family housing growth and start, most importantly, start listening to our residents. And so with that, I'd like to recommend a future board item for discussion on a one percent annual cap on new single-family market rate housing with exemptions for all inclusionary and multifamily categories and also to bring back our inclusionary housing ordinance that was recently amended in December for consideration of amendments to increase the percentage of inclusionary housing required in all subdivisions from the current fifteen percent, uh, minimum, eliminate the in lieu of fee system that has not worked and revive the impact fee waiver for affordable housing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Well, you know, I'll go next, you know, I know this was your platform to pout your, your campaign promises, which is fine. But, um, in that same breath, when we talk about the roads and everything, we talk about revenue. You were against a project that was going to bring in revenue, so we've got to talk apples and apples.
So was sixty percent of our residents.
When I'm looking at that, what you were saying was, you know, you, you prob, you were part of the group that did not promote this project, which is fine, that's your, that's your, that's your prerogative. But we need revenue and with my, with a mind like yours thinking, well, I don't, I don't want to do these businesses, we'll put them at the airport, the airport's not the city, or not the county, it's the city, so we don't receive any revenue. So when I'm looking at what we're talking about is, you know, you talk about twenty thousand units. I just want to make sure people understand that's over a decade, two decades. No one knows, like you said, so no one knows. The Lima Project hasn't even been brought really anywhere. The, um, Intervia Project that is in, in works right now, the Bill Lee Project hasn't really been brought up. So the only thing really going on right now for sure is San Juan Oaks, Santana Ranch and Intervias. Did I miss any of them, Benny? Those are the three projects that were taught, that are on the books, that I know for a fact.
Mr. Chair, did you mention Promontory Plain?
No, okay, that, that's another.
That was also going through a final.
Okay, so, so that one too, so.
And Ridge Mark maybe.
Okay, so, but not the Lima Project.
No, sir, that's correct.
Yeah, and so I just want, I just want to be fair, when we disseminate information, it's fairly portrayed. So other than that, Supervisor Tiffany?
Yeah, um, I agree with, you know, both of you and certain comments. Um, I would agree there's, there has been a lot of housing going on in San Bernardino County as well as City of Hollister. I think we do, and, and I would say that, uh, when I looked at this report, the thing that really stood out to me was the, uh, lack of affordable housing. I totally agree with Supervisor Cosmickey on that and that, that really does need to be addressed, whether it be in San Bernardino County or the City of Hollister. And, um, I would agree, we need to relook at the, um, the in lieu fees and, and relook at, um, impact fees relative to affordable housing to try to en- encourage more, more of that because that's really what we need in this community. Um, I, I would say, and I understand Supervisor Cosmickey's point of view, but I think one has to be extremely careful about imposing, um, you know, caps, like one percent cap. We certainly can talk about it, but the one thing, um, and I, you know, come from a business background, the one thing that we don't want to do, and I argued this very point in front of the city council many times, is we certainly don't want to, um, come off as though we are a community that is, uh, anti-growth. Um, and particularly that would be the case in terms of commercial and business development. And I think everyone up here probably agrees with me on that. But residential as well, I do think you have to be smart about it, but I think imposing, um, very low caps can send a, uh, a bad signal. And, and I think we have to be very careful, that would be one thing I would say about that, uh, when you, when we talk about caps. Um, anyway, those are.
I hate to interrupt you, but Barbara?
Yes, Mr. Chair, could we, um, possibly, uh, possibly agendize some of these items for a future item? Because I just want to make sure that we don't spread too far from.
Sure.
That's kind of where I want to go when I get to the opportunity to talk.
I'm, I'm done talking. And I'll talk with Supervisor Cosmickey about the, uh, the growth cap. So we'll talk, we'll talk after.
So I too had some issues with this item, um, and so instead of getting upset, I went and talked to a few people. Jamila, thank you for the conversation yesterday because you educated me. And so first of all, we have to like roll back a little bit and understand, this is an annual report. This is not about putting a cap on, this is not about, what I want to talk about affordable housing, ADUs. I mean, there's a lot of things I would like to discuss, but this is simply an annual report of what has already happened and it's a, a report that needs to be sent to the state, correct, Jamila? Yes, okay. So, so all of the other, other issues that you raised, I would love to talk to you, talk to them and agendize them and put them on the, the agenda so we can, we can discuss them, um, in full. But when we're passionate about something, we need to make sure we do our homework. We, all of us collectively, individually, do our homework to make sure, because I was all ready to jump on these numbers too. And I said, Jamila, what about this, what about this? And you're saying we have eight hundred and thirty-seven homes that are allocated, seven hundred and fourteen of them are all for moderate income, what about the low income? And I see nothing, so I'm passionate right there with you, but this is not the arena to address that, an agenda item later, yes. But I would like to see us address the affordable housing. I would like to see us address the, um, the ADUs and what we are doing to assist the lower incomes, you know, multifamily, um, apartment complex somewhere, somehow, but we definitely do need to address the residential situation. We are now in March and I know that up there at the labor camp, I don't, I can't tell you the number, but we have, uh, families that are going to be displaced soon, they're going to be homeless, that after March fifteenth, they have no place to go. Where are they going to go? You know, the housing is, there's a shortage here in San Bernardino County. So for those people who are very staunch, um, advocates for slow growth, no growth, cap on the growth, there are residents in our community that currently live here, but they don't have a, a roof over their head. And so we need to make sure that we address those needs. And so it's, it's a fine line that I'm going to have to walk, but this item right now is, is not how we're going to be able to address it. So I'll stop talking on that note.
Supervisor Hernandez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I, I agree with Supervisor, actually, I, I mean, I actually agree with all supervisors. This is not the item to do it.
Say that again, Peter?
But I do agree we have an issue with how, oh, oh, sorry.
I'm just giving you a bad time, Peter. I said, say that again, you agree with all of us?
Yeah, oh, thanks. Well, it's just because I, I do agree we have an issue with housing. Um, I don't want to see us, we already are a bedroom community, but I think it has to strike a balance with what Supervisor Tiffany mentioned is, to certain extent, there's got to be a focus on making sure that we're, uh, increasing the, the visibility of business development. All that to be said is, we're getting to a certain extent into the weeds. So I don't know what, how we would agendize this, Mr. Chair, but, um, yeah, I agree with Supervisor Gonzalez that this is, this is focused on this informational update, but I think it is a good conversation to have. Uh, maybe we just need to figure out where to itemize it to make sure that it happens.
Perfect, Peter, thank you. Any other comments to this, uh, item? Any public comment?
If you'd like to comment, please press star nine or the raise your hand icon on your screen. You've been unmuted, please state your name and you have three minutes.
Elias Salinas, thank you for letting me speak. Um, so for years I've been saying about, you know, the, the developers come into town and they say they're going to do affordable housing as part of their project and they dangle the carrot in front of supervisors and they approve. And then the affordable housing goes out of the way. Now Santana Ranch is a little bit different because, um, they got caught on a few things and they're being held accountable for it, so it's going to happen. Um, with regards to waiving fees, you can't waive the fees because the fees, you know, are going to be carried on to the consumer. And if you waive the impact fees, um, we, the, the people on the roads are going to lose out on that. Uh, so that, I, I've spoken about this before and I've, and that's what I learned, is you can't waive the fees, but I think that if you're going to do affordable housing, you should be able to reduce the impact fees, um, so that it does stay affordable because as we know, the developers pass the cost on to the consumer. So, uh, that would be helpful, but we have, uh, you have the opportunity as a board of supervisors on how progress is going to occur in this counting. Um, going down to zero, going down to one percent is not going to help us. We, we are growing, you can't stop progress. It's just, it's just part of our culture, uh, living in the Bay Area, that that, that that's where we're going to go. Uh, people complain and people run on about the roads and then people run on the campaigns and I'm going to fix the roads. And when you get behind the dais, you, you find out, oh, wait a minute, I really can't fix the roads because I have no power to do that because there's so many other things that have to happen before that one dollar is spent on the road. I know that there was conversations yesterday on Facebook with regards to Fairview Road, you know, and how come they're filling the, how come they're filling with the potholes here and how come they're not doing this road? And when is this road going to be? And they were going after, actually, we're going after the chair, why aren't you answering my questions? Well, um, they don't know where to look for answers and actually, as supervisors, you guys don't even have the choice on which roads get priority. So I think a lot, you know, the, the rumor is people out there, well, if you live on a, if a supervisor lives on this road, the road's going to get fixed and that's not what happens. And so I, I think just for, I'm just saying this so that the public understands that as supervisors, it's not you, it's department has to, that make decisions and I, I don't even understand how they decide which road is going to happen, but it's based on high traffic and there are, there are roads that are, that are highly, hi, uh, tr- traveled higher than others and they need it and that's how they go about it. So anyway, I think I went off subject. Oh, with regards to supervisor Colin, you said, um, permits also pool count as.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Elias.
When you pull a per.
You've been unmuted, please state your name and you have three minutes.
Yes, thank you, this is Valerie Eglin. Um, in the recent APA, American Planning Association Magazine, there is a, uh, cut out here about annual city cost per household. Uh, and when a city has, uh, a lot of urban, uh, development, uh, it runs about, uh, thirty-five hundred dollars per home, uh, to maintain, uh, for the city cost. Uh, if you're doing urban density and, uh, you've got more high rises and smaller homes, uh, within, uh, the city, uh, you're cutting your cost down per home, per family to fourteen hundred dollars. So this is an amazing difference in how, uh, the cost of, uh, moving our housing forward goes. Uh, it's, it's extremely important to up the density in our cities, both San Juan and Hollister, uh, in order to, um, accommodate the low income, uh, the moderate income, uh, by utilizing good design in buildings. So, uh, I, I really think that that is important to keep in mind as well as the fact that, uh, global warming, uh, is raising, uh, the level of our oceans. Uh, the statistics right now show that by the end of this century, which is, uh, when you're enjoying your grandchildren, great-grandchildren, uh, there's going to be an extreme amount of migration from the coastal areas inland. And this is going to affect San Bernardino County. You can find graphs about that in your American Planning Association, uh, statistics. So I, there is more to consider in growth than just what's happening today. That's my point, is that we need to consider, we're not just looking at today, we're looking at a hundred years from now when our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren are going to be growing up here. So, uh, you talk about one percent growth, uh, you can talk about, uh, uh, super, um, uh, affordable housing and subsidies, but you look at those two statistics about suburban and urban living and the costs to the city to maintain its services and then the fact that we're going to be, uh, accommodating a lot of migration from our coastal areas, uh, we've got a lot to think about. So, thank you very much.
Thank you ma'am.
No more comments.
Bring it back to the board, with, uh, any, any parting comments from the board? What's the wish of the board?
You need to adopt and you need to submit.
Yeah, it was just, it was just informational.
No.
No, we have to, we have to adopt.
You have to adopt them.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we-
Oh.
That recommendation, or, I mean, yeah, go ahead, go ahead. That was better.
Calling for a motion, okay. I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we adopt the annual Housing Element Progress Report and submit to State Housing and Community Development and State Office of Planning and Research.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Five, zero, motion passes. Now we'll go to, uh, number twenty-five. This also comes from the Resource Management Agency, adopt the 2020 General Plan Annual Progress Report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Espinoza. This is also an annual report that reflects the activity and implementation of the general plan in last calendar year through 2020. Like the previous item, it's, it's merely a report of activities. But we thought, uh, you might be interested in having a little more information with regard to some of the specific activities that were undertaken in, in 2020 and some of the ones that we are involved in in 2021. But before Ariel Goodspeed, uh, our senior planner, makes that presentation, I wanted to mention just, uh, uh, when you adopt this item, I would appreciate it if you would adopt the, uh, Annual General Plan Progress Report with minor grammatical modifications, because it's been pointed out that we have, uh, at least one typographical error in the general plan annual report. And if you adopt it with minor grammatical modification, we'll make sure that's corrected before it goes to the state. So with your permission, I'll ask Ariel Goodspeed to make a brief presentation for it.
Just one, one thing with Supervisor Gonzalez. Just like you said earlier, this is something in the past, not for the future. So when we're thinking about this, just make sure what we think what Supervisor Gonzalez brought up earlier, which is correct.
Hi, good afternoon, board, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, I'm so glad to be here this afternoon to share with you, um, uh, San Benito County's General Plan Annual Progress Report for last year 2020. So just a brief summary about, uh, general plan. Um, it's essentially the county's constitution for land use development and environmental equity, and it basically provides a vision for how the county's going to grow and change in the future. Um, our general plan has eight elements as part of it that were reported on, three of which, um, were optional, um, that we included as part of our general plan. And again, as we've discussed it, this is reported on, uh, on an annual basis. So these are all of the different sections that are required by the state to include within the general plan annual progress report. Most of the report, um, deals with the third box, measures associated with general plan implementation. So I just wanted to give a, a few highlights of, uh, what we accomplished last year. One of them being, uh, is that we began work on a zoning code update, which, um, actually implements several, about a dozen general plan implementation goals, including zoning consistency, general plan consistency, ordinance consistency, um, building. So we, we're definitely going to be hitting a lot of implementation as we, uh, progress through that. Um, another one I wanted to hit on is, uh, progress made on economic development, staff resources. So in 2019, um, an MOU was put together between the county and the Economic Development Council. And in March, uh, Economic Development Council hired a director. And since, um, the county has been collaborating with EDC on opportunities for new businesses. Um, I also want to maybe hit on some of our tourist-related projects. Uh, in the past few years, the Planning Commission has approved, uh, for private property owners that really focus on agricultural tourism-type operations. These include swing farms, Suncoast Organic Bakery Brewery and Winery, Dam Winery, Troy Van Dam Wine Tasting Room and Winery. Uh, another highlight is, um, in 2020, a facilities master plan was prepared, and it was brought to the board last month. Um, also in 2019, um, our, uh, fire code amendments, uh, were, uh, brought up, and then they were adopted, uh, in the, probably February of 2020. And then, of course, this report, um, implements the annual general, uh, plan review. So some, some program initiatives that, uh, you can look forward to seeing in next year's report, um, include, uh, continued work on the zoning code update. We're expected to complete, uh, the update by the end of this year. Um, the county, um, as was brought last month, uh, is, has applied for a federal grant towards the countywide habitat conservation plan, and we will find out in June if we were awarded the grant. Um, if we are awarded, we will be able to continue work on that. Um, the county is also going to be requesting, um, money in the upcoming fiscal year to work on a park and recreation master plan. And then, um, I just wanted to highlight a, a few, um, items we've been working on, uh, uh, that go towards the circulation element. Um, so one was, we were awarded the Local Roadway Safety Plan Grant, and then we have, uh, applied for and waiting to hear back on a Highway Safety Improvement Plan. Um, we're currently engaged in services to facilitate the evaluation of a new required state level metric, um, for vehicle miles traveled. And, and then, of course, you know, our, uh, continued coordination among, amongst the local agencies. So, um, I'm, I'm hoping that you accept and, um, approve the 2020 General Plan Annual Progress Report, of course, with the minor grammatical mo- modification specifically to a corrected date, um, and that the county will then submit to the Office of Planning and Research and the California Department of Housing and Community Development. And if there's any questions or comments, I'm happy to take them at this time.
Board members, any questions?
Um, I, Mr. Chair, a quick question. I'm just curious, I know you said the, um, the zoning update, uh, review is going to be completed by the end of this year. What are some of the, um, wha- what are they looking at? What are, I'm just curious, what are the, some of the zoning changes they're, they're considering, uh, on updating?
So, um, it's, it's going to be a comprehensive update. Uh, so the items, uh, within the general plan, um, you know, have to do with urban agricultural buffer requirement, uh, agricultural industrial zoning, cost of residential program, um, zoning consistency, uh, general plan consistency, wine hospitality combining district, uh, public quasi-public zoning, um, removing barriers to renewable energy, scenic quarter combining district, updating noise ordinance and ordinance consistency. There's also, um, several, um, uh, state, uh, updates that have been made, um, to accessory dwelling units, um, and housing, um, and so that, so, uh, basically the stuff, the state updates will also be included, um, in, into it. Um, so, so it's going to be pretty broad. We're looking at an administrative draft, um, that will be coming, I, I believe around May. And so that draft will be going out, uh, to the public. So you will all get to review a draft, um, uh, before we actually, uh, bring our final, uh, version to Planning Commission and then the board.
And so then, just learning, a- as far as the process, once those updates are, uh, recommended, for example, then that will, uh, that will mean the general plan gets revised with those zoning changes? How does that work, what's the process?
So, um, so essentially, we're, we're taking, um, we're taking our code and we're, um, making sure that we've, we've looked at, um, you know, what our goals were, uh, within the general plan, and we're, and we're, we're implementing those goals. So, um, sorry, could you maybe add to what you're hoping I can answer a little bit better?
Well, let, uh-
You follow what, okay.
Yes, uh, Supervisors, Joel Ellamwood, Assistant County Counsel. Um, the zoning ordinance update, uh, has to address many changes in state law that have occurred in the past number of years. And, uh, that includes things like secondary dwelling units and, and, um, mandatory approvals of certain classes of projects and so on. And so, uh, that, the comprehensive review of the zoning ordinance will address those as well as, uh, uh, implementing policies in the general plan, um, that require amendments to, to zoning.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Gonzalez?
I'm good, thank you.
Supervisor Kuzmicke?
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You might want to stay up there, Joel.
Um, so I just want to piggyback on what Supervisor, just so that it's clear for the public. So with the zoning code, we're basically taking the, wh- what's in the general plan and effectuating it into, you know, codifying it into a zoning code. So, um, in essence, you know, I guess my main, my main sort of question, I guess, would be, are, are we doing sort of a swath of zoning changes? You know, because when you hear zoning code, um, and overhauling the zoning code, you know, that comes to mind, and, and maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong. Just, I think for the public, so there's an understanding of what you mean, because zoning obviously can come with controversy, and, and I understand what's in the general plan is meant to be, uh, put into law. Um, so I'm just, can you maybe narrow that a little, or explain that a little further, just from a practical?
Yeah, I'd be happy to do so. The, the general plan, uh, outlines a number of implementation measures, and some of them have to do with amendments to the, to the zoning ordinance. Uh, again, there are also changes in state law that have to be addressed with amendments to the zoning ordinance. What I think the focus of controversy has been is where there are land use designations in the general plan that have to be implemented, because there's a conflict between the zoning designation of a particular location and the land use designation. And, uh, and so when a, a property owner who has land that has designated one thing in the general plan has a right to petition to, uh, require the county to amend the zoning ordinance to be consistent with that land use designation. And that's what has been controversial, you know, in the, uh, somewhat less than two years that I've been here. So, um, uh, and I don't, I don't know about the period before that.
So I guess what I'm getting at is, is the zoning code update, is it more just administrative corrections and, and adjusting based on state law? Or is it, or is it a mixture of making those adjustments based on state rules? And then, um, you know, an, an array of zoning?
Well, what, what's, what's in the pipeline is, again, adjusting the, the policies of the general plan to be reflected in the zoning ordinance, and not specific property, uh, zoning changes.
Okay, that answers my question.
Yes, I, and I think I know one thing that you're looking at, because I'm thinking the same, is, um, let's say, for instance, my property, not mine personally, but someone's property is zone agriculture. Now, if they want to do some type of a home-based business on there, is that, are you looking at that also at this time?
Uh, no, I don't think that's part of the program that we're looking at. Unless there is a policy in the general plan that says we should encourage mixed use to allow for certain types of, uh, you know, farm-to-table or ag tourism or some, something like that, that requires changes in the, in the zoning ordinance to accommodate those kinds of uses.
Okay, that's, I, thanks for the clarity, I just wanted to make sure that I was thinking right to you.
The only other thing I had was the, um, the tourism, and maybe this is, uh, maybe this is more of an Ariel question. Um, so the tourism-related projects, that's an interest of, of mine, you know, as a new Supervisor. We all talk about wanting to increase tourism, so I just, um, you know, I, I, at some point, maybe we need to have a more, more focused discussion on tourism and implementing strategies from the general plan, specifically related to tourism and, and strategies on how we can boost our tourism, uh, presence here. And for me, I'm, I'm particularly interested in Pinnacle's National Park, and feel like that's, you know, especially when we come out of the pandemic, that that's, uh, that's an entity that we can take a lot more advantage of and get a lot more visitation here, and, and of course, our wineries, and you go down the list, obviously. But, um, I feel like tourism is a, is a, something that we can do a, a, quite a bit more with than we have historically, and I just want to make that clear, thank you.
Yeah, there, there's very little in the zoning, uh, ordinance that would specifically address tourism.
No, I'm just speaking more related to the general plan update as a whole.
Okay, any, Peter? Any questions?
Yeah, um, Joel, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I, I could have swore at one point in time, we did an update, um, in the, in, yeah, we did some kind of an update where it allowed for, like, residential stays or, or, or like bed and breakfasts, uh, within the, the wine element, I, I want to say. Um, I just, I'm, I'm trying to remember, but I know that there was support of, of some kind of an agritourism benefit to a, um, you know, entity out in South County. It's been a while, so I can't remember, but I don't know if you could remind me?
Um, uh, Joel, is it okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so, yeah, we do have a, a, a goal to have a wine and hospitality, uh, combining district. And so the zoning code is going to, um, include that as part. Um, and, um, there's lots of, uh, policies, uh, within the general plan on, uh, promoting, um, agrotourism operations, you know, within the county on, uh, agriculturally zoned, um, uh, sites. And so, um, this, the, the code will basically lay out, um, that zone and what you can do and how you need to do it. Um, and, and just a little bit to add, um, the code is also going to be updated, so it's a much user-friendly version, and there's more, uh, tables and easier to read and understand by the public. Um, so, so that, that's another element, not just becoming consistent, but making a better tool for our public to use, too.
Thank you. Yeah, I could have swore we already adopted it, too, that's why I was curious, um, you know, how, with, with the general plan updated, how that would include what Supervisor Kuzmicke mentioned, which is the tourism benefit to our county.
Thank you.
Yeah, so it is in our general plan, it just hasn't been officially adopted into our code.
Can we bring it back to the board, any further questions? Public comment, any public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment, please press star nine or the raise your hand icon on your screen. No comments.
Bring it, uh, back to the board, what is the wish of the board?
Um, I might be speaking out of turn, but, um, in terms of looking at the general plan and amendments, I know at one point Supervisor Kuzmicke, you had asked or wanted or interested in looking at, and I'm, I'm going with the nodes again, and I don't know, where would something like that come up if one of us were interested in addressing that? So I'm, I'm thinking, however you had mentioned it.
Yeah, I, I'd like to give the board an update. I do know that that was a, a request from your board. I have met with RMA Director Benny Young concerning that item and bringing that item back to your board. Um, in light of his new hire coming on board on Monday, um, we-
um, we, we will be, um, having her do some work on this and then come back with the presentation to your board. I don't know if you want to add anything further, Benny?
What I would anticipate we would bring back to you is an opportunity to refer the matter to your planning commission with some guidance.
Yes, thank you.
Hey, what's the wish of the board?
I'll move to approve, uh, item, uh, the item, general plan, annual progress report, um, which will be submitted to the Office of Planning and Research.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
On favor?
Second.
Aye.
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 Five, zero?
And that, that does reflect the typographical changes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Now we'll go to, uh, number twenty-six, the treasurer, tax collector, approve a letter of support for SB two-one-nine?
Yeah, Melinda.
Melinda, you on? You've been unmuted.
Okay. Um, so I'm asking your board to send a letter of support for SB two-nineteen as recommended by our, uh, Tax Collector Association and our lobbyists, Shaw, Yoder, Smelter, and Lang. Um, a little background on how, um, this SB two-nineteen came about. At the start of the shutdown in March of 2020, um, many companies were offering, uh, delayed mortgage payments, cell phone payments, utility payments, et cetera. And they even delayed, um, the income tax filing. Our, um, lobby, our Tax Collectors Association lobbied the governor to not delay the payment of secured property taxes as counties, schools, cities, and special districts rely on this revenue as one of their main sources of revenue and cash flow. So what came about was Executive Order sixty-one. Um, and this basically allows taxpayers impacted due to COVID-19 to request a delay for paying their property taxes that were due after the shelter in place was ordered on March seventeen, twenty-twenty. If their request was approved, they can pay their property taxes without penalties by May sixth of twenty-twenty-one. And they have to provide documentation to show how this, um, how they were impacted by COVID. And this has now become what we call the COVID waiver. Uh, this was the first time that financial hardship was introduced into a penalty waiver request. And it only applies to, um, COVID requests. So, um, SB two-nineteen is authored by Maguire and, um, it adds the word financial hardship to the penalty waiver process that relates only to COVID waivers. The normal penalty waiver has completely different set of criteria and SB two-nineteen does not apply to it. It also puts, um, a, for lack of a better word, a disaster penalty waiver process into place that will mirror COVID waivers. Um, it's a new tool that tax collectors can use, um, if we, um, if we continue in this situation or we find ourselves, um, in the future, um, in this type of situation. Uh, the Tax Collectors Association, um, has asked their Board of Supervisors to send a letter of support for SB two-nineteen. Uh, I have not found any, uh, counties that oppose sending that letter. Uh, those counties that chose to voice their support on what we have is a chat line, um, is Mendocino, Monterey, Merced, Orange County, Humboldt County, El Dorado, Bland, San Mateo, and Fresno. And it's also supported by C-FAC and many, um, uh, Chamber of Commerce's. Um, there was some concern with, um, administration as to how this affects teeter counties. Um, all but, um, eleven of the fifty-eight counties are teeter counties. Um, in particular, Salmonino County has issued over twenty-five thousand bills since July of twenty-twenty. And the mon, the majority of these have been secured, about, uh, twenty-three thousand. We've received approximately two hundred COVID waivers and then, and we've approved about ninety-nine percent of them. And so this is really a very small percentage of penalty and interest wa, waivers that will occur this year. Uh, we were one of the, um, higher collected collection percentages at the December installment for twenty-twenty based upon a survey that, um, our association did with the various counties, um, at the end of December. Um, today, we have collected forty-six percent in penalties for secure taxes, and that compares to thirty-eight percent of what we collected this time last year in, um, penalties. So, um, we're asking for a letter of support by your board for, um, SB nine, two-nineteen, and it only applies to, um, the situation that works for me and, um, people that are impacted by COVID waivers. It does not apply to a regular penalty waiver. Do you have any questions?
Uh, my first question would be just, how will they be approved? Uh, is there a, I mean, it's, I don't want to, I want to make sure that there's no gray area. I mean, when you're approving a waiver, is it a person reading it and saying, okay, I think they're within the, uh, the rules? Or is it something that's black and white?
Sorry, I didn't quite get the whole.
Okay, when, when you're approving a waiver, number one, who approves the waiver? And number two is, how do we make sure that these waivers that are approved are indeed someone that really is having financial troubles because of COVID-19?
So we have a process in place. Um, we review our COVID waivers, um, weekly, um, and they're reviewed, um, by my staff and myself. Um, we take a look at all the documentation that has been, uh, submitted. Um, and then we kind of make a determination, uh, based upon the, uh, information that was submitted. Sometimes we do have to go back and ask for additional information. Um, something that's a little more concrete than, um, I had, uh, for example, I had, um, COVID during that time period. Well, then we would need something that said, um, from the doctor or a lab test that, um, had a positive test result, um, instead of just taking a word that you had, um, COVID. Um, so we kind of scrutinize what, um, the documentation that's been provided. We have not approved all of them. Um, there have been some that we were not quite sure and we've asked for additional information and they really weren't able to provide additional information. Um, so I feel like we have a pretty good process. Um, it's not just one person, not just myself, that decides, um, if somebody should be approved or not. And then once they are approved, we send them a letter that they're approved and this is how much they have to pay. Um, and basically, um, without any further information from our association or from the governor, um, COVID waivers have to be paid by May sixth of twenty-twenty-one. We received, uh, quite a few, I would say half of them. We received after the first installment of twenty-twenty, not the first installment, but the April installment of twenty-twenty. And then we received, um, not quite as many, but, um, we received not quite half, you know, um, for the second installment this year.
Okay, now the last.
And most of them have some financial, um, impact.
The last question is probably more of a Ray question, but I know it takes additional manpower in order for you to, uh, review all these documents. Is there a way we can be reimbursed through the federal state with some type of, uh, COVID nineteen dollars?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. One, one of the concerns that administration had was teeter itself. And a, as you know, we've been building that into our budget every year. And, um, this particular item, um, is kind of after the budget process. And one of the reasons why I actually, um, called and had a meeting with our Tax Collector Treasurer about this, um, and, and asked for more information concerning what, um, potential financial hit that would be on our, on our budget. Um, and by our conversation and kind of what she's expressed today, the rate of return or the rate of people paying on time is much greater than has probably ever occurred for some odd reason, uh, during this COVID time. It's kind of interesting. So, uh, we've had a very, um, good rate and I, it doesn't look like there's a lot of delinquencies. So, um, so with that being said, um, you know, we obviously have to spend some time and scrutinize this. It's hard to, to, to really kind of give you a clear number, but it is going to take some work, I think, to really look at this and, and to probably work with, um, the Tax Collector Treasurer's office on, on how many people and what, what impact it would have on teeter. Um, so there will be some work that we'll have to do and spend some time on. One of the things I did request of the Tax Collector Treasurer is to potentially have drafted in this letter a request for the state to fund this. Because if they're, if the legislature and the state is moving forward with this, um, I feel, or I think we've all have felt that we've been impacted in many ways and, and it's another kind of unfunded actionable item that they're putting forward. And then we're having to pay for it, um, is to request for them to, um, potentially subsidize this in some fashion to offset the teeter, uh, delinquencies. So that was one of the requests or one of the conversational pieces I had, um, to maybe possibly add in this letter. And that's just something that's.
Okay.
It's up to you, the board.
Supervisor Tiffany?
Uh, a few questions. First of all, um, and I don't know if this is, uh, for you, Ray, uh, um, but for, for, uh, Melinda, what is the, do we know, you said there were, there's not a tremendous number of people involved here that are delinquent that would apply under this. Do we have an idea how much, um, how much money we're waiving roughly? That's one question I have. And, and how long does this, this grace period go for? I mean, is it during the, uh, as long as the COVID is an emergency? Or how, how long, how long of a period are we talking about? I'm assuming there is a point where they have to pay their property tax even though that we're waiving the, uh, delinquency.
So I'm not quite sure I understood, uh, your questions, but I think number one, what you were asking is, um, do we have an amount that, um, of how much penalties we waive? And the answer would be no, but I could get that information for you. Uh, number two, how long will this continue? Um, I believe was your, one of your questions? And, um, as of today, we do not have any further indication that this will, um, go, um, after May sixth. That's the governor's order is that it expires on May sixth of twenty-twenty-one. So, um, that would be my deadline. And, um, should the association, um, or something come about with this, um, SB two-nineteen bill, um, we would, um, not be taking any, um, waivers after that and we would expect them, um, out of May sixth, twenty-twenty-one. Um, we really haven't received very many. Um, when you look at the whole scheme of things, we've sent out over twenty-five thousand bills and we've only received maybe two hundred. That's not really, um, a great percentage. Um, we have not been essentially waived very many, uh, fees.
Okay, well, thank you. And I do think, I mean, just as we are trying to support businesses with business grants in other ways, I, I think it makes sense to, uh, particularly given the fact there's not a tremendous amount, not so many that's going to dramatically impact our revenues. Um, it, I certainly am supportive, uh, helping those businesses that have, uh, that might, might be delinquent because of COVID-related issues. Thank you.
Supervisor Gonzalez?
Can I, uh, see real quickly? Um, COVID waivers do not apply to people that have, um, that paid their, um, property taxes in their mortgages. If you have an impound account, you are not eligible to apply for a COVID waiver. And of all these new homes that are being built, um, the majority of those mortgages, um, have their impound, uh, property tax paid in their impound accounts. So it does not apply to a great percentage of, um, homeowners.
Melinda, can you do me a favor? I don't know if the board heard or not.
She was, uh-oh.
Can you repeat that again, if, if that's okay? Sorry about that. I don't know if the board was clear with that. Yeah, can you repeat that, Melinda, please?
Regarding the impound account?
Yes, perfect.
Um, yeah, so, um, people that have, taxpayers that have, that paid their property taxes in their mortgages, uh, called an impound account.
Oh.
Um, they do not qualify for a COVID waiver. Uh, there has been possibly two that we, um, made an exception on being that they were, they had, we, we received a letter from their mortgage company that they were, um, in jeopardy, uh, bank bankruptcy. Um, other than that, you, um, I'm sorry, um, homeowners that pay their property taxes in their mortgage payments are not, um, eligible to apply for a COVID waiver.
Thank you. Supervisor Kuzmicke?
I have no questions. Thank you.
No questions.
Supervisor Hernandez?
No question, Mr. Chair.
Bring it back to, to, uh, public comment. Any public comment?
If you'd like to comment, please press star nine or the raise your hand icon. You've been unmuted. Please state your name and you have three minutes.
Um, Elian Salinas, thank you. So just to be clear, that this is, uh, for both commercial and residential. Um, the, the landlords may not evict, but they also haven't been getting paid. So I just want to confirm that those include people that are, you know, have multiple rentals that, that also include on this. It's a rolling snowball, you know? Um, I can't pay my rent, my landlord can't pay his mortgage, you know, and so on and so on. So, you know, if, if I've got renters, I can't evict them, but I also can't pay, I can't pay the property tax. So I just want to confirm that it's both, uh, landlords, commercial and residential on this. And I'd guess the prerequisites would be some type of economic proof of loss and not just because I say I got COVID and, and a doctor's note. I mean, obviously with the, are you requesting some type of, of bank statements or something like that? I'm all for this, don't get me wrong. I just, but, but, but what we went through with the PPP program, I don't want the same thing to happen. And if we're not going to get reimbursed, we're going to be deeper in debt than we already are as a county. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Would you like me to respond to that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, so we've had very few, um, requests from landlords to, um, waive the penalties, the COVID, uh, to do a COVID waiver. Uh, we've had a couple, um, and yes, they do have to prove, um, more than just that they say, um, that they had a renter that didn't pay or that they counted victim. Uh, we do request, um, further documentation on, um, that impact and that loss. Um, it does apply to, uh, residents, business owners, commercial. Um, it applies, um, pretty much to anybody that's received a, an invoice or a bill from us regarding their, uh, supplemental, their secured and their unsecured. But the majority of what we mailed out this year, um, are secured bills.
Thank you. Any additional public comment?
No more comments.
Bring it back to the board. Any final comments? See none. What's the wish of the board?
I move that we approve the letter in support of SB two-nineteen that if passed will grant tax collector.
tax collector, tax collectors the ability to waive penalties due to the financial and econo, economic hardships during this time of pandemic.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Five, zero, motion passes?
Thank you.
This concludes our meeting for today. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Before we make that motion, can we go back? Because I know I interrupted Barbara when she said items that were coming back for, to be agendized. Can we, can we go back and look at that list?
I'll take, I'll take care of that after.
You got it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I make a suggestion that we adjourn in honor of John Sanders?
Sure, that's very good. Let's, let's take a moment of silence for Mr. John Sanders. Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.